The meeting of the Shreveport City Council is not being called to order. We will have an invocation by Ms. Deborah Kelly. Okay. And Councilman Green will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
Let us pray. Father God, we thank you for this day. We thank you for this beautiful weather that we finally have as a reprieve from the floods. Fathers, I ask that today that you'll just be upon this meeting. May you bless those who make the decisions that face our city, Father. I just ask for a hedge of protection over each one of those who serve, from our mayor, our city council, and our civic leaders. Father, in light of this being National Police Week, I just ask for a special prayer over the police department, for those who've served and continue to serve, and to be with the families of those who've been killed in the line of duty. Father, we thank you for your love and your mercy. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Let's recite the pledge. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, will you call a roll, please?
Councilwoman Harper.
Present.
Councilwoman Fuller.
Present.
Councilwoman Nicholson.
Present.
Councilwoman Butcher.
Here.
Councilwoman Conley.
Here.
Councilwoman Jordan.
Here.
And Councilwoman O'Leary.
Here. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the Administrative Conference on the 22nd, the council meeting the 23rd, and the amendment to the meeting on April 9?
Summons.
The move by Councilwoman Fuller, and seconded by Councilman Butcher. Motion carries with seven. Does any council member have any awards or distinguished guests they'd like to attend at this time? Seeing none. Mayor Perkins, do you have any distinguished guests or announcements at this time?
I do. I have quite a few, so bear with me. This week, we have governors from throughout the country here in Shreveport for the National Governors Association Summit on State Cyber Security. Our team will be present for the conference, and I will bring greetings, so I might have to step out a little early, depending on how long the council meeting go today. We have some folks who have been committed to serving our citizens for decades. Now they've decided to retire. I would like to express appreciation for these employees who recently stepped into retirement bliss, or will be doing so very soon. They are Assistant Chief of Police Robert Dowell, Captain Dennis Pratt, and Superintendent of Streets and Drainage Ernie Negretti. Assistant Chief Dowell was unable to join us, and also Captain Dennis Pratt is, but Assistant Chief Dowell was, sorry, he completed over forty years of service to the police department and retired on April 30, 2019. Captain Dennis Pratt is retiring May 31, 2019, having completed thirty-two years of service with the department. Ernie Negretti is, Ernie, can you stand up, please? Ernie Negretti is here with us today. He'll retire this week. He has worked a total of twenty-five years in Streets and Drainage Division of the Public Works Department, and came back from retirement to serve the city of Shreveport. So, Ernie, thank you for your service to the city. Means a lot to me. I'd like to recognize two Shreveport firemen, Sergeant Alan Smith and Staff Sergeant Benjamin Cotton. Both are serving in the Louisiana National Guard, and recently won the forty-eighth Annual Winston P. Wilson Sniper Championship. Are you, Sergeant, yeah, can you all stand up as well? Can we give them a round of applause as well? While we're on the fire department, I would like to also recognize the K-9 team of our fire department that stepped up last month to help out with the disasters in Ruston after it was hit by an F-3 tornado. Battalion Chief Mike Mackey, K-9 Trace and Fire Engineer Justin Mackey, and K-9 Ruger were on the scene during searches of damaged buildings. Did we let Ruger in the room, or did he have to stay out? No? Okay. Well, thank you, gentlemen. Let's give them a round of applause as well. Our firefighters will also kick off their Muscular Dystrophy Association fundraising drive with a press conference at 11:00 a.m., May 23 at Central Fire Station located at 263 North Common. On the weekend of May 24, you'll see our guys out at Walmart and Sam's Stores. National EMS Week is May 19 through May 25. Also that week, Shreveport Fire Department will host its Second Annual EMS Training Symposium on May 24 at the Convention Center. I want to congratulate Council Clerk Art Thompson on his recent recognition as the Liberty Bell Award recipient, which was bestowed upon him by the Shreveport Bar Association. Mr. Thompson, you mind standing up for a moment? I know you never get enough recognition. That's a great tie you're wearing, too. I really like your tie. Good choice. Sport Tran will kick off its Children Ride Free for the Summer campaign on May 20, and extend it through August 11. To get a Free Fair Card, students simply have to show their report cards, class schedules, or a letter from the school to Sport Tran, representative at the Internal Modal located at 1237 Murphy Street. I want to recognize the Shreveport Boja African American Chamber of Commerce, as well as a celebration of seventy-eight years of service in our community. Would someone from the organization like to come and talk about the Seventy-Eight for Seventy-Eight campaign you have going on right now?
Hello? Hello? There we go. Counsel, thank you, guys, for having me. We had an initiative this year. The Shreveport Boja African American Chamber of Commerce has been around for seventy-eight years, and one thing that we wanted to do this year was increase our membership, so we offered a special to attain some new members. We did a promotion to where it was seventy-eight new members to join our organization, and we successfully did that within three months. So we are, you know, building the Shreveport Boja African American Chamber of Commerce to the next level, and we look forward to our partnership with the city of Shreveport, with the mayor, and this council. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. James. Appreciate it. I'm also proud to announce that the Mayor's Advisory Council for Persons with Disabilities is up and running. Bylaws were approved last month, and this body held its first meeting Friday, May 10. I would like to ask Mitch Dennis to step forward. Is he here? Hey, how you doing, Mitch? Can you come up and say a few words about the organization?
There's one right there. Right behind you.
Right behind you?
Representative Depp, I see.
Everyone hear me okay? Thank you, Mayor Perkins, for your willingness to restructure this advisory council. Traditionally, in Shreveport, there's been a Mayor's Advisory Council for Persons with Disabilities, and we're really honored and excited about your willingness to restructure this advisory council, because, you know, in the Shreveport Boja City area and in North Louisiana, there's still a multitude of barriers for people with disabilities to live independently and to be inclusive in the community, and to have every opportunity that every citizen has in the Shreveport Boja City area. And I'm just grateful that I have an opportunity to serve. I work for New Horizons Independent Living Center. I'm the program director there. The Center for Independent Living provides a variety of services in North Louisiana to adults with disabilities to help enable them to live independently. I've been the program director there now for fifteen years, and have lived right here in the Shreveport area most of my life. Thirty-five years post-injury, a spinal cord injury, and I've just seen things over the last five, ten years really improve, and I've seen the city of Shreveport work really hard to make sure that people with disabilities are included, to make sure that people with disabilities have every opportunity to get out, to work, and enjoy the communities that they live in without the barriers that exist, you know? We have the opportunity to work with public entities like Sport Tran and Lifeline, and all these great services that help people with disabilities get out and enjoy the community. So I'm really excited about this Mayor's Advisory Council, and I think that with the folks that we have that have agreed to serve on this council, we have a great opportunity to really do some great things. And this year upcoming, we've, National Disability Employment Awareness Month is in October. We already have a commitment by Mayor Perkins and his administration to do some great things during that time, to provide some genuine opportunities for people with disabilities to go to work and to do those things, and have a better quality of life. So I'm super excited about that, and I just thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Mitch, for your service to the city. Mitch brings his charismatic leadership to lead a very compassionate, engaged group of our citizens, to include one of our most common visitors here in the council chambers, Mr. Murphy. How you doing? Thank you for your service. He's taking pictures over there.
Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I would like to present a proclamation recognizing National Police Week. Could Chief Raymond and Chaplain Kelly please join me for this presentation? So I'm gonna read the proclamation so I can look at the audience, and then I'm coming down to take a picture with you. Proclamation reads, "Whereas on October 1, 1962, President John F. Kennedy signed a proclamation that designated May 15 as Police Officers Memorial Day, an annual observance to honor the nation's fallen law enforcement officers as men and women of courage, judgment, and dedication, and whereas the calendar week in which it falls has been designated National Police Week, a time of reflection and appreciation for the ultimate sacrifices made by the exceptionally dedicated man and women of law enforcement who were killed or disabled in the line of duty. And whereas the city of Shreveport is grateful for the day-to-day heroism of our officers, both past and present, who have given so much of their lives and service to our community, and whereas members of the Shreveport Police Department play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of all of our residents, through their efforts, Shreveport is a safer, more civil city, and a better place to live. Now therefore, I, Adrian D. Perkins, Mayor of the city of Shreveport, do hereby proclaim the week of May 11 through May 17, 2019, is National Police Week in the city of Shreveport, and urge all to honor the heroism in all law enforcement officers, especially those who have given their lives so that others might live. May we always remember their tremendous sacrifice and the loved ones they left behind, and witness their error of, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the city
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, Grayson, Butcher, for helping me get this set up. I've been a chaplain for Shreveport Police for almost two years. I was a dispatcher for eight years, and I've always had a heart for law enforcement, especially those men and women for Shreveport Police. They have a special place in my heart. I have a couple, many friends who were lost in the line of duty, the last being Tim Prunney, and I just want to say thank you for honoring our men and women.
Yeah, I want to echo her remarks and invite everybody out tomorrow to the Peace Officer Memorial Event that will be taking place at the Boja Civic Center at 11:00 a.m. We'd like for you to join us there. Thank you.
Thank you. The last note from my very long-winded remarks is just a quick administrative update. The position which was approved by council that would dedicate an engineering staffer to oversee the consent decree work, the deadline for the application was May 10. We've only received two applications, and currently the engineering and water sewer staff are reviewing those applications. Just a reminder, the purpose of this position is to have an additional person supporting the efforts of the department, and right now in the interim, our staff for engineering and water sewer does have the expertise to temporarily fill that role, so we'll keep you updated on the hiring decision. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
All right. Thank you, Mayor Perkins. I have Councilman Green, and then Councilman Fuller.
You can go ahead.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, before we leave the announcement, I'd like to say congratulations to the Cavaliers and their winning state baseball championship yesterday, two to one.
All right. Councilman Green?
Yes. Mr. Chairman, as I announced on yesterday, all of you are invited to our worship service on Sunday morning in Mission Baptist Church located at 6029 Buncombe Road. The Honorable Governor will be worshiping with us, and just feel free to come and share with us. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right. Councilman Green, thank you. Mr. Norman, did Ms. Negretti already leave? Okay, okay, that's fine. I'll just go bring him up if he hadn't. Any other councilmen have any announcements or anything at this time? All right. Anyone have any, is Mr. Green there? Property standard?
Mr. Chairman.
Uh-uh.
Mr. Green, I don't know if you have toured the various districts, but in my district, there's so many areas where trash, just collection of trash, look like maybe somebody evicted someone, and all that rubbish is piled up. Mollum Street and Allendale Lakeside area, there's some streets also in E-mail Care area. I don't have those exact streets, but if somebody could just patrol those streets, then I think you'll see what I'm talking about.
Councilman Butcher?
I talked to Mr. Green about this, and this may be actually, I talked to Councilman Corbin about this today as well, and this may be a city engineer question. I'm getting some calls, and it's not in my district, but it's adjacent to my district, about the Bayou Walk Shopping Center. Mr. Green, you really don't have an update on that at all, and really doesn't really fall under property standards issue. Do you think, Patrick, you have something you might could add to that for us?
Well, I was previously in touch with the current property owner, and they don't tell me too much. They tell me progress is being made. I kind of feel like there's more to the story that they're keeping private.
Right.
But I'll touch base with them. It's been several months, so I can touch base with them again and try and get an update.
I would think, just by looking at, I rode by there the other day, and, you know, just right there at that Kroger entrance, it's starting to look, you know, I think y'all boarded it up according to what Councilman Corbin told me, and what Mr. Green said, but it's starting to look really like a pretty bad eyesore there, so I don't know when property standards might have to come in to play with that, but it looks, it looks pretty bad. I would think that the building itself has started really to deteriorate. There's a lot of chip and paint, and stucco and stuff falling off of it, so it's starting to look really, really bad. So if y'all would kind of keep us updated on that, I would appreciate it, because I have gotten three emails and a Facebook post in the last couple of weeks about it, so maybe all the rains making it look worse, I don't know. Thank you.
All right. I sent you an email, so hopefully I don't know if you got it, but that's it.
Okay. Anyone else? Thank you so much, Mr. Green. All right. Ms. Jones emailed us the revenue collection plan, and Ms. Krill has emailed, did we get something from Ms. Krill? I don't.
No, sir, they haven't made any changes, so there was no report to send.
All right. Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Thompson, is there any legislation to be added today?
Uh, no, sir.
All right. We have a filed request to speak.
Mr. Tom Arseneau. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Mr. Chairman, my name is Tom Arseneau, 333 Texas Street, Suite 700, Shreveport, Louisiana, 71101. I'm here on behalf of the applicant in what is Ordinance 54. It's zoning case C-24-19. It was here on an application for C-3 zoning. The applicant wishes to consider a lower grade of zoning, particularly C-2, and to be able to consider that, it would be necessary for the council to send the matter back to the Metropolitan Planning Commission, and that's what the applicant requests that you do today. I'd be happy to answer any questions. It's currently zoned residential. This is at the corner of East 70th and East Burke Coons Industrial Loop.
I think that for everybody, for reference, we talked about it yesterday, this is in front of the Sleep Clinic there at the corner, right across from Jill's Gymnastics. It's a little small sliver of land right there in the front. I don't know how it ever got zoned residential, but I would be inclined to send it back to the NPC for the downzoning that they're wanting. Ms. Strand, hopefully you can guide us through how we do that.
Yes, sir. You can just make a motion when the item comes up on the agenda, and just do just that, have it sent back to the NPC for further consideration.
Okay.
Happy to answer any other questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, when the item come up, I would like for Mr. Clark to be available to answer questions as well.
Yes, Councilman.
Sammy Mears.
Sammy Mears, 1901 Sittinery Boulevard, apartment M-110, Shreveport, 71101. I believe it's a wonderful idea to recognize Ralph Valentine in dedicating the 3400 and 3500 block of Mansfield Road for his commitment and contributions to continually help the Shreveport City. Years ago, I lived out a little bit further in an apartment place not too far from there, and then on Sunday mornings, I would walk on foot from there, going through 3500 and 3400 Mansfield Road, just to get to Springs of Grace Baptist Church, which used to be called Sunset Acres. And then when I got a chance to walk back home when it was over, and I had a great time doing that, that was a long time ago, and then when it got too hot, I knew I don't think I could handle heat index, so I was really nice enough to get a little help from someone at my church to help me, but the years at that time, and 3400 and 3500 Mansfield Road sure did go by fast when I was younger, and when they did, they sure did go by fast, and how in the world they did, I'll never know. But a good quote yesterday, and while you're doing that, I'll be thinking about the time that I did ride home, and the driver that was with me asked me, "Why do you think people wear glasses?" And I said, "Maybe they don't like contact lenses." And then I was waiting to do this from Ray Stevens. "Pardon me, sir, did you see what happened?" "Yeah, I did."
Thank you, Mr. Mears.
Hi, I'm Mr. Cedric Murphy, 2744 Murkin Street. Mayor Perkins, thank you for your comments earlier, and thank you for being here. Councilman O'Leary, he's out. Councilwoman Fuller, and the rest of you guys, hello. Today I want to talk about public safety concerning individuals with disabilities. This is a situation where a senior citizen was at Sam's Parking Lot, and an individual who was illegally parked in a handicap parking space backed out, ran over. She was stuck up under the wheel, and I think it may be as far as this concern, if we can raise the penalties for people parking in handicap parking spaces that might deter them from doing that. They did a survey, and eighty percent of the people who did the survey said that they have seen that many people parking in illegal parking spaces, and we need those spaces. This young man, Mr. Payton, is still missing. He went missing in January, and I'm not sure exactly what the protocol was, but it wasn't that much for individuals with special needs, and I think maybe there's something that could be done differently when they've identified the individual with special needs. This situation here is my concern about police officers and how they deal with people with disabilities. Anthony Charles was pursued by a police officer because of him sagging a hundred dollar fine, and the young man is not dead. And I don't think the ordinance for sagging was to include altercations enough to where someone died from that incident, but that's just something to think about, guys. The young man died, a veteran. And another thing, he also had post-traumatic stress syndrome, for which he did have some concerns, but I believe he had a relationship with the police officers, for which they knew that. So people with disabilities still need to get some education to the police officers so they can maybe handle situations differently. A Mr. Odom was shot in a situation at the corner of Greenwood Road and Jilla, and he had bipolar syndrome. So once again, some of these things are known by the police force, and if there is a chase or something happens, that should be considered in the chase so they maybe can handle it different, and I think that some cultural education is needed. We have, okay, on April 8, a young man was at the Sport Tran facility, got something to eat. As he was leaving, he pulled over inside the white lines, as you see, and a police officer in a transport van backed into him. That's why he's not in the chair. These pictures are being taken from the individual who was on the ground at that point, and that individual was me. And my concern is that I noticed today the Sport Tran buses, when they backed up, they honked their horn a couple of times, so maybe these police or city vehicles, for which they cannot see the back of them when they're backing up, maybe they can honk their horns or something to let them know, you know, that they're backing up. And you can see in the second video, that's the damage he did to my chair and to his vehicle because of the way he hit me. But my concern was that somehow city vehicles maybe should honk their horns up when they're backing up and they can't see behind them. Okay, my next video. This is concerning the mayor and Councilman Butcher. They passed a legislation that's going to allow these type of scooters to legally ride on sidewalks, bicycle paths, and highways, and they can go up to 25 miles an hour. This is going toward the future, people saving gas, people trying to get around the Shreveport, people trying to get to work, and since they said they can actually ride them on the highway, it's something that you guys may need to get a jump on and think about. It does say at the bottom that the legislation authorizes the city and parish government, Department of Transportation and Development, to prohibit scooter operation if they believe it affects public safety.
C-2.
And that's where you guys come in, Councilman Butcher and Mayor Perkins. One last thing. Councilman Butcher, when you have your public safety meetings, is it possible that you can post them on this page called "Notice by Me"?
Okay.
To whereas, when you have your meetings, people can get notified because of, a lot of the boards and things you guys own do have that.
Right.
And I would love to come to one of your meetings because I want to bring up some more issues about public safety with people with disabilities.
Mr. Cedric, you're over your time. I'm trying to extend this so you can have some more, Tom?
No, I'm good. I'm good. I'm good. I'm good. I want to thank you for doing that, Councilman. I'm good. Anybody have any questions, don't ask me about what's happening there, sir?
Real quick, can the council staff do that? Is that something we can look into doing? Okay.
Ms. Strand, I'd like information on what the penalties presently are for parking in handicap spaces, and if they're inadequate, I certainly would support legislation to increase them. I don't want people abusing those spaces. Mr. Murphy?
Thank you so much, Councilman.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, in addition, I thought some vehicles had those sensors where when you're backing up, they make a noise. Do city vehicles have that? I know some do.
This was a transport vehicle, a huge vehicle, and the officer said, "When you get out, you didn't see me."
Yeah.
That's something I might ask the administration to look into, the sensors have something.
Councilman, I can tell you, a majority of our fleet does not have those sensors on them. I mean, that's an investment we'd have to make. Most newer model vehicles have those sensors, but a lot of our fleet does not have it.
So as an option, putting out a policy where they would honk their horns if they're backing up in areas?
And we can, I mean, we can look at when we're bringing, when we're procuring new vehicles, to make sure that's a part of the procurement procedures, to make sure we can have it, but as of now, like I said, a lot of our fleet are much older vehicles that don't have the new technology.
But at the same time, we want to prevent this from happening again.
Oh, I agree with you. Yep, 100% in support.
Thank you, Councilmember, and Councilwoman.
Thank you, sir. Mr. McLean. McKeon, excuse me, Mr. McKeon, I'm sorry.
I'm Jack McKeon. I live at 168 Patton Avenue. I'm gonna save that for the next time. I'll come back next time. Problem we have on Patton Avenue is we've got speeders, not just your average speeders, because, hey, just down the street from us, we have parents getting their kids to school in the morning, and picking them up in the afternoon. Twice, I've almost been hit by a parent rushing to get to pick up their kid from school. Not only that, it's FedEx, UPS, Postal, and a school bus, and I've got the number for a school bus. Just think that speeding is okay on Patton Avenue. At one time, we had fifty-eight kids living on that block. Now, dynamics have changed, people, kids have grown up, they've moved, parents have moved away. We have, now we have approximately about twelve to fourteen kids living on the block. My point is, I've talked to My point is, I talked to St. Joe's about this, the school, I talked to the priest, several of the priests about, new priest is there, is on board with me, about putting speed bumps on Patton Avenue. We had speed bumps on Preston years ago, and the insurance companies came to work before the city council and said that they were going to sue the city because their policyholders were damaging their vehicles. The reason they were damaging their vehicles is they're driving too fast, and they were hitting the speed bumps, and they were throwing them out of alignment, damaging the undercarriage, all sorts of stuff. And the city attorney at that point did not know of one little thing. So they backed off, and they said, "Yeah, we'll take out the speed bumps." Now, the people that live on Preston have all put in cars out on the street because they have curbs. So now it's a weave to get through there, so nobody can really speed through the street. We can't do that on the 100 block of Patton because we don't have any curbs. The 200 block does have curbs, but they don't have no cars to be able to make up the same difference. And the parents and homeowners I've spoken to on the 200 block have all agreed, "Yeah, we could use that because we have too many people speeding down our street. They use us as a cut through." And I'm not, I'm not going to be one to say, "I don't use streets to cut through, but I don't do 45, 50 miles an hour down some of these streets." Well, any of them, matter of fact. I know people are speeding because I have a marker at one end of the street, and I can count the poles when they're coming down. It's a mathematical equation, and I can tell you within five miles an hour how fast they're going. And I've caught people, and I actually had one guy back up to me, and he threatened to get out of his car. There used to be two other gentlemen that lived on our street, John Wills, who's now passed away, and Damon Jordan, who now lives in Oklahoma, and the three of us were the fathers who stopped everybody from speeding. We all hollered at them to slow down and stuff. And for the most part, we didn't have this problem before. I'm in the oil business, I've been gone for the last five years, I haven't been home for the last couple. And in that time, we have had an increase of people that are coming from across on Riley, across King's Highway, cutting through, getting over to Yuri, cutting over off, taking a ride on Aniston, heading up to Liquor Store up there. The reason I know that is because I pass it onto my bank.
Let me, I'm sorry, let me, thank you very much for calling me the other day. We had a long conversation about the speeding problem that you're discussing. I'm going to ask, and I am asking now, he's in the room, Chief Raymond, to focus some resources on this block, and I will discuss with the city engineer the speed bump issue. I do understand that there were liability concerns with leaving those in place, and I don't know what the outcome of that discussion will be, but I appreciate your call and to our attention very much.
Okay, well, two things real quick. I have spoken with Chief Raymond about this issue, and number two, if any insurance company wants to come and say that their policyholders are damaging their car because of speed bumps, I'll be happy to pull suit and file against them for reckless endangerment of children and of all.
That's time, I appreciate you, thank you. Councilwoman Fuller, you have something to speak on this?
Yes, chicanes are probably a better solution for a lot of our neighborhoods that are having this exact same problem because they create a similar obstacle as to having the cars parallel parked where you have to weave through them, and that's maybe a more cost-effective and psychologically effective way to get people to consider slowing down. And it's something that I hope we can bring up with traffic engineering and with the police department and public safety. Thank you, Chair.
Councilman Butcher?
Chief, I've seen, I know on Ellerby Road, y'all have one of those mobile radar-type deals. How many of those do we have?
We have three local trailers.
Right.
And we also have a couple of similar, but they strapped to like a tree or a pole, but they give you a readout of your speed.
To me, I mean, that makes you really think about how fast you're going when you're going around a curve, if you see you're doing 45 when the speed limit's 25. I would suggest maybe trying to put that over there on Patton.
And I could be incorrect, I believe we've had one out, what I was told by traffic. They're out all the time. In fact, we bought another one last year on a grant because they are so useful. They're not sitting under.
Right, I see them. I just was thinking maybe.
I'll check, but I'm pretty sure we had one out in that block after I sent the complaint to traffic. It was a couple of weeks ago, I met Mr. McKeon, but I'll verify.
Okay, thank you, Chief.
Councilwoman Fuller?
Respectfully, radar is great for accountability when they are there, but we need to look at ways to, we need to create obstacles, like permanent obstacles.
No, no, this is that trailer that it sits there.
I understand.
And tells you how fast you're going.
That kind of accountability is fine when it is there, but that's something we can't just leave in one place all the time. We need one, we need like probably 10 of them just in my neighborhood, but what's going to be a more permanent solution is going to be creating the physical boundaries that will slow people down.
I agree with you. I think this is a good deterrent.
What is a chicane, Councilwoman Fuller?
I'll pull one up for you.
I'll save that for next week. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Chair.
Those images, they can be poles, they can be waters like this.
Thank you. Mr. Byron Wilcott.
Hello, my name's Byron Wilcott. Thank you for letting me come and speak to y'all. Last week...
Say your address, real quick, I'm sorry. Say your address, whatever.
My address is 4214 Calderwood, Shreveport, Louisiana, 7119.
Thank you, sir.
I've come here to talk to y'all today about Anthony Childs. He is a young man who was murdered, who was killed on February 5th or 6th, I believe, and I am not impressed with the way things have been resolved with it. There's a lot of questions to be answered. Two weeks ago, I believe, we had a meeting at the Winfield Funeral Home. Mr. Bradford was there, also the police chief was there, a few other people were there. The coroner was there, and answers were not satisfactory or even believable for what happened to Anthony Childs. I asked the coroner myself, was there a trajectory test done to determine whether Anthony was on the ground when he was shot, or was he standing up? He could not tell me. I asked the police chief if Officer Brooks had knowledge or knew of Anthony before this incident. He could not tell me that either. These things are things that need to be answered. Also, there was no gunshot. I asked the coroner, was there a gunshot residue test done on Anthony Childs? It was not, or he told me it was not. We don't know if Anthony shot the gun or not, was the gun there or not, because there's no gunshot residue test done on his hands. So there's just a lot of questions that need to be answered about this case. It was not, also, the family getting information about the case was held off for so long, and there was not really transparency on what was going on. And as a public, it creates distrust, it creates unbelief of what is being told, and especially when people show up at the meeting to tell us about what's going on, and they can't answer the questions. Basic answers, they can't answer these questions that are being taught, asked, and they're the professionals in the group. Why there was not a trajectory test done, that's unbelievable to know whether he was standing up, whether he was on the ground when he was shot. And so I believe this young man, Anthony, his family, they deserve to know what happened to his kid, to this man. Thank you.
Reverend Mays. Lester Smith.
Good evening. My name is Lester Smith. I reside at 4148 Thiel Street, Shreveport, Louisiana. I'm here also to speak on Anthony Childs and a couple of other issues. First of all, I agree with the gentleman before me, there has not been total and complete transparency where Anthony is concerned. The video you showed us, you show us a man running for his life, and a few seconds later, he takes that life. I have a problem with that, very big problem. And I just don't think we're getting the answers, not only in Anthony Childs' case and all the incidents that has happened in Shreveport, but Shreveport police officers were concerned. There have not been a conviction of any officer that has killed a black man in Shreveport. And it's just, it's kind of crazy that mass killers with all types of guns can shoot up a school, and they can be apprehended without any incident, but an unarmed black man don't have a chance in this society. Hands up, don't shoot, and you end up dead. So we're having a problem, not only with Anthony, but with how the police department just treat black men in general, in general. And I think this needs to be looked at through some other organization other than policing polices. You take it to Internal Affairs, and Internal Affairs is run by other police officers. So we see that there have not been a conviction, and we don't know where you get your grand jury of who those individuals are because they have not done anything. So at this point in time, it's time for a change. We need a citizen review board, or somebody to police the police other than the police policing themselves. We need citizens involved in this process, and we cannot continue to allow this to go on. And we're not going to allow Anthony Childs' incident to be swept under the rug like we've done in the past. You give us a few minutes, and we come out, we sweat and blow our top, and it goes away. This is not going away because this young man didn't deserve to die. Nobody looked at, checked this officer. His mentality, based on the things I've got, he had no business being out there. So we got a lot of issues we need to look at, and I want to work with the police department. We put some things together this week, we met, we got some things together. We want to do a Sunday evening with pastors and police interacting, maybe softball or something. Also, summer is here, and we need to put something in place for our young peoples. And I want to talk to the council about maybe police is at the pool, give them a wonder where the police can be there with young peoples and interact, because we've got to do something about the disconnect where police and the community is concerned. So I just, I don't have all the answers, but I know we need to do something, and we cannot continue to allow this city to govern itself the way it governed itself when it comes to equality where minorities are concerned. We're the majority, and we still are not getting our fair share of anything. We prayed for four black councilmen, Lord, give us four black councilmen, and we got our four black councilmen. Our suffering remains the same. We had our three black mayors. Our suffering remains the same. We have our black DA. It's justice, we still can't find justice in the criminal justice system. So we don't, I mean, we're out of options. We had a better time, it's almost as bad now as it was in the 60s. Cut me off, but you give everybody else a few minutes.
Pastor Mays, 335 East Azalea, Shreveport, Louisiana. First of all, I just want to piggyback, we got a coalition of individuals that are here, and just to piggyback on what Mike said, our concerns will be heard this time. We are reaching out to the individuals that are elected officials to say, "No more." I've been coming down here for decades, asking for a citizens' review panel, saying that the matter is going to get worse rather than better. And we have a majority of African-Americans in this city that is elected, and still, as Brother Lester said, who's working with us, nothing is being done. And it's obvious throughout this city and throughout the country that the Internal Affairs does not work, the Civil Service Board is not a board, it's just somebody that's sitting there. So we need action. And listen, 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 this time here is not like any other time. Because the reason I kept coming, because I know God, and I know what God will do. The voice of the people will be heard, and if you can't hear the voice of the people, then the people will replace you. If you think you are above God and above the people, and the people's suffering will continue, then God will remove you off of your stand. You need to understand that you work for the people. When we get these offices, I'm so glad of Councilman Willie Bradford, I spoke with Councilman Green, I'm so glad that those who are concerned, this is not going to be one of those come down here, hoop and holler and shout, because we got a coalition of people, even from the state, we're working with them as well as you all. So I'm, we serve and notice, we're not coming down here begging no more, we're coming down here pleading no more, we're coming down here demanding stuff now. If you say you from our neighborhood, and you was raised up in our neighborhood, then you ought to act like and show up like a neighborhood person would do. So I'm here to let you know today that we are demanding a citizens' review board because the police cannot police themselves. I'm going to continue to say it, we need you guys' help, and if you don't help, then we're going to put people within them seats that's going to hear the voice of the people and not going to deal with the politics of yesteryears. It's time to deal with it right now and make some changes. Hear God's voice, and I'm going to leave this with you, because my time is getting ready to go, I'm going to leave this with you. If you do nothing, then shame on you, because I'd rather, I'd rather be accountable to God than to be subject under the authority of any man. God bless you. We will get the board.
Hold on a second, Reverend. Councilman Bradford, I yield to Councilman Green.
Pastor Mays, would you tell them why I wasn't at the meeting, please?
There was a lack of communication, and that's the reason why me and Pastor Green did talk. There was a lack of communication, the purpose, the reason why he wasn't there. But he did at least call to let me know what had happened and how it happened. So I want to tell all the peoples in the audience and those that have hit us on Facebook, I want you to know that that was the purpose why he couldn't be there, because it was lack of communication. But the district attorney's office had committed to be there, our mayor, I talked with his secretary, we scheduled this around his schedule so that we would make sure that we would have the people there. But I do appreciate the police chief, he was there, and the coroner was also there. They said, "We serve you all, and it's up to, it's for us to be here." So they was there, and they did answer some hard questions, but to answer your question, as I take my seat, thank you so much for clearing that up, at least having enough respect to call back.
Oh, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
And I expressed this at the meeting, that I thought, and I commend you for taking the lead in hosting that meeting. While I, some of the questions I thought was beyond for the citizens to answer, but I did tell you that, yes, that there's going to be an opportunity, I'm sure, where everybody who was involved would be placed in a situation, including being on the oath, where they would have to reveal what they feel was happening with the consequences of penalty. Now, I spoke with DA Stewart this morning. Yes, sir. There's a meeting scheduled with him.
Yes, sir.
On next Tuesday. Are you aware of that?
I'm aware of that. Lord Thomas with the NAACP, we forced the district attorney into having a meeting with us, because the meeting will happen.
Because again, a lot of the questions that was presented at the meeting was centered around why the DA didn't feel compelled to at least look at this case.
Yes, sir.
And at least present it to a grand jury. He's prepared to respond to those questions.
Yes, sir.
But in regards to a citizens' review committee, again, my mission from that meeting was, what can we do to ensure that these type of incidents don't happen again?
Yes, sir.
My sympathy for the family continues.
Continue briefly.
I told you at the meeting, and I'm going to tell you again, that this city, fire police, serve under the protection of the municipal fire and police civil service laws. This body has very limited jurisdiction when it comes to some things that regarding police and fire. But I did tell you that we can, though, pass a resolution petitioning the state legislature to look at giving this city the authority to assemble such a committee or board to look at how we can at least bring some public oversight to what's happening in the police. Now, that's something that I'm willing to look at, but I want to do it after we meet with the DA next week.
Okay.
And get his rationale.
Sounds good.
On why this wasn't...
And Sam Dinkus told me that, I don't know if he called you yet, but he said he would bring the legislation up in committee so that we can start moving forward on this because he's tired of it, I'm tired of it. Dr. Green, you... Dr. Green, you said the governor would be at your church. We don't want no photo shots. I want you people to ask the governor a question about why black men are studied getting killed within this state, and no officer have ever been indicted or put in jail. No more photo shots. We want to know why, why, why. So, I heard you this morning say that he will be there, and we got some questions for, for the governor as well.
All right. Well, I just want to let you know again that I appreciate your efforts.
Thank you, sir.
I appreciate the response from the community. We welcome, we welcome your feedback. I mean, this, this is a democracy. We, we here to serve you to the best of our ability.
Yes, sir.
So, we will continue to look at this case and this situation. But my, again, my, my, my priority is that whatever happens, Anthony Charles should not happen to any other citizen of Shreveport.
That's it.
Thank you, sir.
And thank you guys so much.
Michael Williams.
Good evening to, to our administration, to our chairman, to our honorable mayor and his great staff. Michael Williams, 2101 Carver Place, Shreveport, Louisiana. As I pondered on what, what I, what I was going to say, and I see the conditions that I've been fighting for all my life having changed. And not even, none of the thing that many of you I've worked with, Pastor Green and Brother Bradford and many others, on changing the condition. In order to change people's conditions, you got to change your position. You got to change the way you think about Shreveport. Shreveport is, needs an open heart surgery. It's time for a change. It needs a new heart. It's decaying all over this community with same old malice and the same old hate and the same old racism and the same old discrimination, especially in crime and economic injustice. We come too far to get where we at, the progress where we at today, to go back, turn back the clock of time. Now, I'm in opposition on ordinance number 27 to reel and replace. We don't need to repeal and replace, we need to repeal and replace some of the people that's elected, that will do their jobs. People are frustrated, you throw the pus of the people in the trenches. It's not about black and white, it's about what's wrong and what's right. And we want to stand up for justice, there's going to be some people standing up, but there's going to be people standing back because there are consequences for standing up for justice. Boy, don't I love that. And what we have to do is not turn back the clock of time, but we must move forward, not be a city of postponed, but be a city of progress. Quit kicking a can down the street and accept your personal responsibility and land up the water and make a decision on that. People need hope, they need jobs. These black contract are not coming down because they'll repercussion when you stand up for something. They bully you, they intimidate you. You had to die so you don't have the credential to be an architect or engineer, now you're going to make decisions on how the contract should be done. You're going to open up somebody's business publicly and make it personal, make it politics, and not about policy. This is wrong. In the 21st century, we got to learn to work together. We don't learn to work together, we're going to turn to blow up together. And boy, this city has blown up. So, I just believe that we have the great opportunity, and this define a moment in history. When the record books are written, it say, "How did you vote when we had the opportunity for change?" We got more of the same. It's time for a change of direction. You let the same old people get the same old result, it's just time for a change. It's a mandate for change. Do not turn back the clock of time. Let's move forward and make sure minority contractors have an opportunity to compete for jobs and equality. And let there be a disparity in economic opportunity and hope. That's all we say. Why are we here in America? That's African-American. Why are we here? We come and get a good education, do the right thing, join the army, do what we supposed to do, and come back here and get hope in this city. That is wrong. That's wrong, and I hope that you do not vote on order number 27, that you move forward, uphold what is it, and keep the train moving. Because we trying to be the engine, now who trying to be the caboose? Have a great day. Thank you.
Freddie Ashola.
My name is Freddie Ashola. I move around quite a bit, so I don't have a set and defined address. One of my moms, Ms. Nita Steele, asked me to give a little bit of background on myself, I think for clarification purposes. I'm originally from Utah, and so came here in 2012 by way of a business failure. In my life, I'm an undergraduate of Utah State University. I have my degree in accounting and international business. I've owned or operated upwards of two dozen businesses, and I've traveled the world doing microfinance. I also used to serve as a pastor here in the city. In 2017, Sheriff Steve Prater said the following. "State prisons are a necessary evil. To keep the doors open, we need to keep a few. And that's the ones you can work. That's the ones that can pick up trash, the work release programs. But guess what? Those are the ones they're releasing. In addition to the bad ones, and I call these bad, in addition to them, they're releasing some good ones. That we can use every day to wash cars. To change oil in our cars. To cook in the kitchen. To do all that where we can save money. Well, they're going to let them out. Mr. Nicholson, a few weeks ago, you accused me of character assassination on Sheriff Steve Prater. And I would submit to you that you cannot assassinate the character of a man who has For those of us who are unable to sit under the umbrella of white privilege, these statements reek of racism. For those of us, for the entirety of our lives, have had to deal with derogatory statements, getting spit at in the face, and dealing with police profiling, these statements reek of racism. For those of us who had to endure the pain and the suffering of cattle correctional center, these statements reek of racism. I've heard from this board a myriad of times that you do not have the jurisdiction to influence the things that happen in that jail. And I would say to you, you do have the influence, maybe not in an official capacity, but you absolutely have it in a personal one. His office is on the seventh floor. I've been banned from there, so I can't, I can't do anything. But you all can, and you have the opportunity to make change in this city.
Marvin Mohammed.
Marvin Mohammed, 2808, Hershey D. Wilson. First of all, I do want to speak on the, on the issue of the citizens' review board, but so many people and I already spoke on it, that I want to speak on something that was spoke on at the last council meeting. And that was the influx of young people being appointed or confirmed to different positions in the current administration. And I don't really fully understand the pushback or the push against young people being appointed. You know, Booker T. Washington, a name that aligns the name of a local high school here, also that aligns the name of streets in the neighborhood that I grew up on, the MLK community. He was 25 years of age in 1881, when he became the headmaster of what is now Tuskegee University. 25 years of age. Dr. King, who's renowned worldwide, when he became the face of the Montgomery Bus Bar Car, he was a mere 26 years of age. 26, when he became the chairman of the Southern Christian Leadership Conference, two years later, we'll do the math. Michael Mex, when he became a minister under the most honorable Elijah Muhammad in the Nation of Islam, he was 30 years of age. When Mega Evans became a field secretary for the state of Mississippi, the, the NAACP in the state of Mississippi, he was in his twenties. Young people have always been, if you will, the, the power source to create a new paradigm, to create a new reality in the government body, whether it's local, state, or national. And I'm really here because there was an attack in this here, I don't see him in the room today. Maybe he got, maybe he got a phone call to say, to be absent today, but there was an attack in this here, a few, at last council meeting, talking about these appointments. You know, I was graced and blessed to be at the dinner table with some of those appointees a few weeks ago. And I only said this to them. Remember that in the 1952, and I know Councilwoman Fuller, she would appreciate this as a librarian and researcher, in the 1952 June edition of Hoppers magazine, these words were penned. "Old, old, old for counsel, old men for counsel, young men for war." It is the young, it is the old that can not only teach the, the, the young people how to fight, but how to win. I don't want to pull any strings in here, but our, our clerk, Art Thomas is a, a reservoir. It's a, he's a spring of continual reservoir of knowledge. Young people, so we have older people that's, that has the knowledge, that has the wisdom, but we need, need that new light. My thing to them, my, my thing to them is to be a purification of black excellence, for them to be a brilliant and, and, and excellent extension of the greatness that produced them.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to extend the gentleman's time one minute if he's not finished.
Thank you.
Just wrap this.
And I would say this, as I close, to the citizens' review board, I was at that meeting. This isn't something new. Councilman Green, in 2004, he was, he was, he was one of seven council persons that voted in support of Representative Cedric Glover's House Bill 959 to, to create a citizens' review board. So, that research isn't needed. That was Resolution Number 84, for, for those who like to, who like to have that information of 2004. So, so it's there, the groundwork is there. We just need this council to move forward. I spoke with, with, with State Representative Glover, he, he, he gave me permission to, to cite his name, to cite his bill, and he's very interested in, in this movement. And so, and as I said, Councilman Green, you know, he, 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 the, the groundwork has already been formed. Thank you.
Councilman Fuller. Mr. King Craft. Dr. Gabriel Taylor.
Should be Dr. W. Gabriel Taylor.
Excuse me, sir.
And it must be correct, because I have a book on the market, and you might want to purchase it. I'm Dr. W. Gabriel Taylor. I reside in, I am the proprietor of 1402 Greater Vista Street. Here in Shreveport, Spanish word means beautiful scenery. Of course, it's not like that now. It is horrific. I want to thank God for Mayor Perkins. I appreciate your vision as a young man, and I support you wholeheartedly. And persons under your administration are beginning to reach out to me. Mr. Terrence Green, Tony Carter, and Mr. Tom Marshall concerning the many things that I was going to bring before you, so I won't have to be long, because they have already said we're going to handle it. And I think it's only fair to give them a chance to handle it. I do have one issue that the people in the community know that I have the voice and the dynamics. Amen. And that means I have a dynamic voice. That's the proper way of saying big mouth. Common vernacular mean big mouth. I can see it. I'm not only a pastor of 47 years, amen, and a classroom teacher many, many years and taught here, amen, so I know what to say, how to say it, and I know how to articulate it. I know the syntax, I know how to say what I need to say. That's why I'm a writer. The people asked me to come so they would not have to protest that right there across the street from me at the Mount Moriah Park, and I have fuss with spar about getting out there cutting it, and they're doing a little bit better, Mayor, amen, because they weren't getting out, cutting around the crystal poles and, and around there and around the swings and everything can be looking out there. So, I get on them, and I have someone who said to me, called me, and that I will do. But there are no facilities for those children, and the children wanted to go to the restroom at one of my neighbor's house. I said, "Don't do that."
Excuse me, Chair, can we give him another minute?
It's fine, just wrap it up, please.
Okay, yeah. I said, "Don't do that because people are saying different things about, we start fooling with children, you have to be very, very careful." So, there's no toilet out there, no some kind of facility in the Mount Moriah Park. And I, I think that would say it all, because I can come back again and say a lot more. But just listening, I thought that there was some folks stood up here, they were up here a lot lonelier than me, and I'm very, very timely, amen. So, but anyway, it didn't take me long to say, we need a toilet or some kind of facility out in Mount Moriah Park. And I've already talked with, about the grass being cut and cleaning up my area, because I have pictures, and next time I'll just go on Facebook and I splatter everything there.
Ms. Aura Hart.
Good afternoon. Mr. Mayor, Councilman, my name is Aura Hart, live at 6911 Bathany Street, Shreveport, Louisiana, I won't take up much of your time, but I want to share with you what's going on in Cedar Grove. Cedar Grove, as everybody know, and if you don't know, was once a city proper. Cedar Grove annexed into the city of Shreveport, and it's still a wonderful, wonderful, wonderful community, no matter what anybody says. We live in Cedar Grove, those of us who live there, by choice. Not because we can't go anyplace else, but because we choose to live in Shreveport. I'd like to, I mean, in Cedar Grove, I'd like to share with you, we are on the cusp of a Renaissance festival in Cedar Grove. We would like for all of our councilmen to come alongside of us, to be a part of this, to show us direction as to how we can financially afford what we're doing. to show us direction as to how we can financially afford what we're doing. I'd like to share this information with you, you will get a formal invitation, all of you. Our event is June 15th. I will pass these out, so everybody will know exactly what we're talking about. We will be in touch, we will be calling you to sit down with all of our council people, so that this will be, this year, our first festival for the rebuilding of Cedar Grove Neighborhood Association. So nobody will go on TV and say, "I had an accident in Cedar Grove," like nobody bumps cars anyplace but Cedar Grove. So, I'd like to pass these out to you, I'd like, you will be hearing from me, I will expect to hear back from you, so that this year is the beginning of our eight years headed towards the 100th year anniversary of Cedar Grove being a part of the city of Shreveport. We will be having an annual festival for the next eight years, until we're ready to have our great, great festival in eight years.
Mr. Chairman. Councilman Bush.
Ms. Hart.
Yes.
What, what's your date, that your, your potential date for your festival?
June 15th.
June 15th.
Yes. Information is here, I'm going to pass these out, so all of you will have it, I've got your numbers, I guarantee you, I won't let you forget any of them.
Thank you, Ms. Hart.
Ms. Hart, are we dressing up like Renaissance Fair Renaissance Fair, or like Harlem Renaissance Fair?
Pardon me?
Are we dressing up like Renaissance Fair, or Harlem Renaissance Fair?
Well, you know what, you can.
Because I like a dress up.
Okay, and it's going to be that kind of a festival. We're going to have fun, we're going to have food, and we're going to have entertainment. This will be something for the mayor to be proud of, since he's from Cedar Grove, and so many of you whose ancestors are from Cedar Grove. Come on out, enjoy being a part of Cedar Grove.
Mr. Robert Thomas Jr.
Good evening, everyone, how you all doing? How you doing, Mayor Perkins, council members? I'm standing here today, basically, I'm going to just keep it real, keep it short.
Name and address.
Excuse me?
Name and address.
Robert Art Thomas Jr., 235 Ice Cream Street, Shreveport, Louisiana. What I want to talk about is the need for a Citizens Review Board here in Shreveport, Louisiana. Man, we dealing with a police department that is off the chain. Me and myself, I'm, I'm, I deal with an entity here in Shreveport that we created called Real News Behind the News. We talk to citizens, we don't just talk to pastors, teachers, we talk to citizens, and we see what's really going on. Let me give you all an example, just the other day, y'all seen on the news, on Devone Street, what happened on Devone Street? They sent 49 cars to the wrong address, innocent people went to jail. Your police department here is off the chain. Think about this, we talking about Anthony Charles, who was shot four times, but somehow miraculously, the only bullet that hit him, he shot himself. We got a current interim police chief, back in 81, was involved in the shooting, where the guy was shot eight times, and miraculously, he shot himself in the head. What we're seeing is a pattern of abuse and bullying, because when the folk rolled up on Devone Street, they didn't have any intentions already trying to sort what was going out, they came to bully and intimidate. This is what we're seeing in our neighborhood. How can we ask the people who are bullying us to patrol themselves, to investigate themselves? So there is a need for a Citizen Review Board. And with respect to the police department, now, we admit that, we as a citizen, we have to work with the police department, but how you going to work with somebody that's, that come up here like gangs?
Yeah.
You talking about Crips and Bloods, you got a gang of people that wearing badges.
Amen.
You see what I'm saying? So people are intimidated, because nine times out of ten, think about it, if somebody calls in, they seen a murder, how many unsolved murder cases there here in Shreveport? Oh, we know for a fact that Anthony Charles got shot very questionably by a police officer here in Shreveport. So we are really serious about petitioning the City Council to create a Citizen Review Board. And we'll be here every City Council meeting, and guess what, the numbers are only going to grow. We going to bring more numbers each and every time. More and more people are coming down here, because people are tired, man, we, we respect our police officers, there's a lot of good police officers. The ones who came on Devone to deal with me, they were pretty cool. But there was some that came out, jumped out of the car, didn't want to hear nothing, nobody said, and ran up on the wrong people's house and arrested the wrong people. I'm a witness to that. So what we saying, the people, the citizens of Shreveport, the ones I talked to, the ones who get out and go work at your McDonald's, and your Subway's, your service workers, your concrete workers, your, your everyday workers, we need a Citizen Review Board. We really need a Citizen Review Board. That's all I got.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman. Mr. Thomas. Mr. Thomas. Councilman Green wanted to address you, Mr. Thomas.
Also, as soon as the weather dry up, Mr. Norman is going to clean all that grass out at the dead end by the railroad track, but we just waiting for the, and clean the ditches as well, because every time we get ready to do it, then it rain, but we got some dry weather, and I talked to him today, and as soon as it dry up, we going to get all that cleaned up.
And I, I do really would like to talk to you, Councilman Green, I'm in your district, and I would like to work closely with you, because your district is off the chain, that's why all the killing is taking place, in your district. Your district off the chain, every night, it's bad when you got nine-year-old kids able to tell the difference between a firework and gunshots. This is what's going on in District F.
Yes, sir. 63571.
We'll talk, we'll talk.
All right.
Ms. Virginia Evans.
She just might be on the front row. Last name is Evans, but that's my sister.
My name is Virginia Evans.
Welcome.
I live at 2817 Hershey D. Wilson, in Shreveport, Louisiana. Couple months ago, they said they heard a voice coming from beneath the earth. That was the birth of a slave, injustice that has been coming on in the city of Shreveport, where our people have been harmed. And now, you're shitting down. We don't only stand for that. Y'all had us out of line for us to vent, that's what black people do, go vent, and then they go wrong. But that time is up, and right now, I'm addressing each and every one of you all, that change has to come, and it has to come from people that are willing to stand up and say, "We are being treated as if we slaves again."
Amen.
And we're not tolerating it.
Yeah.
And another thing, Mr. Ben Ryan, I stand with for you and say he's a liar. I stand with for you and say the corner is a liar, because Mr. Charles was killed by Satan. Now, I've heard dragon ride, black, get you killed, walking while you're black, get you killed, but if your parents are gonna be shitting, you're dead. And it's a lie, and we don't allow it to happen here. This is not the old days.
Not at all.
And we don't have anything coming to our community, no business, nothing, but yet still, when we look at the TV, we see from the City Council, they barely had it stop Shreveport. We want some of that money, we pay taxes, we ain't getting nothing out there. And I appreciate y'all allowing us to come before, but I want you to know that this is not the first time and the last time. Now, we, we have to do something to come and march and crawl off the City Councilman, and march around the building, we need to do something. We don't vent, now it's time for what?
Mr. Darren Dixon.
For the record, Darren Dixon, address 7200 Gregory Street, 71108. I don't know, it's been some tough acts to follow, I don't know if I'm going to get that loud or sensational, but I am going to be directly to the point, and I rise to speak about ordinance number 27, and my concerns about that, as it relates to how it can impact businesses. And let me, let me get this disclaimer, I'm not standing here on behalf of the Shreveport Chamber, I know I'm past Chair, but I'm standing here as a citizen that's concerned about, that have worked with minority contractors and businesses over the years, and I understand the challenges they have with, with getting contracts with the city. I think over the past few years, I've seen a uptick in, in, in minority contractors, be they engineers and what have you, that have been able to access government contracts, and, and I don't want to see that stop with them having to come before a council, and not to say your job isn't important, but it is, you're the legislative branch, but I think it's an overreach when you go from the legislative and deal with the day-to-day operation of the executive branch. So my plea is to, you all think about that seriously, and, and consider repealing or withdrawing this, and seeing how you all can work together to be prudent with city dollars, but also don't put a hindrance in the way that, that may give opportunity for businesses that we work with. That's my plea, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dixon.
Taylor Jamison, 3532 Lakeside Drive, Shreveport, Louisiana, 71119. I too share the same feelings as Mr. Dixon, when it comes to ordinance number 27, I feel like the City Council and the mayor should really look at this and take some time to really see if there's another way for this to, to occur. As Mr. Dixon say, I'm coming here as a concerned citizen, I'm, I'm very concerned as to the way that this, this could, could lead. I think you guys are all responsible up there, and I think the mayor is extremely responsible, and I have the utmost faith in his decision-making on, for contracts, being able to pick minority vendors. So I would ask you guys to table this, think about this some more, and hopefully we can come up with, with the resolution. Thank you.
Councilman Nicholson.
Mr. Jamison, thank you for being here today. You are the President of the African American Chamber of Commerce.
Correct.
You know, I have been just completely taken aback by the suggestion on social media and elsewhere that ordinance 27 would adversely impact minority contractors. I do not understand that concern, and I will, for the record, again articulate what ordinance 27 would do if it were passed.
Sure.
Ordinance 27 firstly would require the city's purchasing agent to rewrite our purchasing policy. I think that's a housekeeping exercise that should have happened a long time ago, and I, I don't think there's any objection to that part of ordinance 27 from your constituents, is that right? Or do you know?
I'm not able to comment on that right now.
And then, and then another part of ordinance 27 is, in its present form, requiring a competitive bidding process for bond council, at the request of several members of the council. I agreed last month to separate that from ordinance 27, and withdraw that and possibly bring it back at a later time, if and when it was apparent that five members of the council would support it.
Sure.
I think that the part of ordinance 27 we're discussing is the idea that there should be some threshold beyond which the council has to approve contracts and expenditures, and the, at one point in the past month, the majority of the council supported imposing a $500,000 threshold, and so that would mean that only the very largest contracts and expenditures that the city makes would be subject to final review by the council. Why do members of the minority community think that they would be disadvantaged by having this council consider contracts above that amount? How would that harm anyone in the minority community?
Sure, I, I can't speak on the minority community as a whole on this particular issue, but I know, me, myself, the mayor has told me personally that he has a vested interest in minority participation. That's what I'm going off of, and I can trust that, so I'm going to entrust in the mayor to uphold that, and I want to see him do that, and I think we should hold him accountable to do that, and we should allow him to do that.
And I will, I will also say that I am, I am supportive of the city's fair share program, to the extent it is used to build minority capacity. You know, I have white people in my district, I have African Americans in my district, I represent all those people, and, you know, some of the things that have been said on social media about this ordinance are just astonishing.
Sure.
I mean, one, one person whom I don't know suggested that I was Stalin, because I wanted to have a $500,000 cap beyond which we would review contracts. I really, and this is not directed to you.
Sure.
You, you have been most courteous to me, we've had more than one meal together, and I've enjoyed that very much, but I will say generally that I, I think it is not helpful for the city and its future for members of the public, or public officials through proxies, to attack members of the council and suggest that racial animosity motivates legislation when that is plainly not the case. I want the best for this city, I want the best for all of Shreveport, and when I, when I suggest that Shreveport have some reasonable threshold beyond which contracts come to the council for review, I am doing no more than suggesting that we do what Atlanta, Georgia, and Charlotte, North Carolina, and Houston, Texas, and, and many, many cities throughout the country do. So I, I do not think, based on my recent conversations with my colleagues, that a majority of the council is prepared to impose the, the contract review that I have proposed, I respect that. Now, I am one member of the council, I appreciate the efforts that my colleagues have, have put into this ordinance, I appreciate the conversations that I've had with the mayor. I have proposed this legislation because I think it's in the best interest of the city, and as I have said many times over the past two months, my ordinance is consistent with the promises that I made to my constituents for a more transparent and more efficient government. It has nothing to do with trying to deprive Mayor Perkins of authority, it has to do with my trying to address structural problems with the government of this city that have resulted in our literally nearly being bankrupt. I mean, our last audited financial statements for the period ending 12/3117 showed that we had a reserve of basically zero. My only concern is that we do what is best for the city as a whole, and I'm going to continue to do that, I hope that in time I can persuade my colleagues to make changes to the way that we do business that will improve the city's future for everyone, but thank you very much for being here.
Thank you.
Mr. Lester Smith, have you spoken? I'm sorry, I had, I have your car, and I don't know if you
I'm sorry, I had your car, and I don't know if you have.
He spoke. I probably owe Mr. Lester Smith an apology because I stepped out and I didn't know that we were extending time today, because normally I'd been cutting it off. And I'm getting there. Councilman Butcher pointed out to me when I came back in that we were doing that. So if you feel as though I owe you a minute, I will give you that minute now, Mr. Lester Smith. If you feel as though I owe you that minute, I'll give you that minute back. Normally I don't. I just, I try to run the three minutes, but I just...
I pretty much said all I really had to say. And I do want to commend our mayor and his efforts. I know he's getting beat up on every corner, but I support you, mayor. I stand with you. And it's just that we need to work together. We can come, we can have these shouting matches and bickering, but at the end of the day, if we want this city to progress like you all say you do, we're gonna have to work together. You cannot say one thing, you know, when these cameras are on, and then your actions are altogether different when they're off, when it's voting time. That's what I'm talking about, when it's voting time. So if we want to really bring a change about, we gotta work with the police chief. We can't say that the police department is beyond repair, because we have to have police. We have to have them, so we have to work together. We can't say that this council is dysfunction and, you know, we want to remove you. We have to work together. And I think a lot of time, people come and they get elected to a position, and then they get elected because they want somebody to like them. I don't care whether you like me or not. Treat me right. Be fair by me. That's the thing that we need to stop saying, well, I want somebody to like me. I don't care who liked me. I really don't care who liked me, because I'm big enough, grown enough to stand my ground. Say what I say and mean what I say. But I want to be sure that you treat me right, that you be fair by me. That's what I stand on it. Thank you, guys.
Mr. Smith, I'm sorry, Councilwoman Fuller.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So what does the Citizens Review Board or committee look like to you?
It's a board that really, the makeup is of citizens with some professionals, because we have to have like lawyers, people that understand the law. I've talked about maybe getting some of our retired judges, or somebody to be on that board as an advisor.
So how would you say we go about appointing? Should we look for nominees? How do you think we should take nominees if we decide that we want to go ahead and put together a Citizens Review Board?
I think we should get the people that are going to stand up and most active in the community at confronting those issues where police behavior is concerned. To have a record not being overly dramatic with it, but have a record of standing up with fair and impartial judgment. That's the main thing. See, because the board shouldn't be out to destroy police or crucify police, but it should be, the purpose of the board should be to hold police officers accountable, you see. And we need, we need a preacher. We need entrepreneurs. We need former judges and lawyers. We need all those type of people. But we need, it needs to come from the grassroots. And I say that because the grassroots are the ones that's being infected and affected by what the police officers do.
I agree with you, and I've heard that from, I've heard that all over my community, black, white, rich, poor. I've had people say they've been harassed riding their bicycles downtown at night and not being treated with courtesy. I've heard lots of things like that. I've had people be pulled over in their rental cars, I've invited them to come, not rental cars, but cars they're trying to sell with temporary tax, and I invited them to come and speak about the issues that they had, and I've talked to Chief Raymond about that. And I don't want to get into that, because I'll be the one complaining that I'm hungry in about an hour because we've been here too long, and it'll be my fault. But let me ask you this. How do you feel about the suggestion that we already have a civilian review board because we have five civilians appointed by the mayor on the civil service board?
Correction, Councilwoman, the mayor doesn't appoint those five individuals. The Southern University and LSU US makes those appointments, not the mayor.
Okay, so that's one thing right there.
No.
So it's just not gonna, there's no way that can be good enough. They're being suggested by the academy, the academics rather. So we really do. So I guess it's gonna be up for us at, would it be public safety to determine how we move forward with creating that? I'm not on that committee, so I wouldn't get to vote on that. That's a problem.
You know, I remember in '72, I was a sophomore at Southern University, Shreveport. And I was at home. I worked at Dobbs' house, come home, 11:30 to do homework, go to school the next day, loan my brother my car. And about an hour later, I hear gravel flying everywhere, my brother beating at the door. Police officers come in my house and beat me mercifully, asked one question. What did he do? And they just come from everywhere for asking a question. So if anybody in this room should have a problem with police officers, it should be me. But I'm willing to let the past, some things stay in the past. Some things I'm not gonna leave in the past. I'm gonna keep it up front and present. But because we have to work with police officers to make where we all live safe, I have to sit that on the back burner. But I don't forget what they did. I went to our black leaders and they said, what you gonna do? I said, I'm gonna do what y'all tell me to do. I'm not gonna call names, because one is deceased and one is still alive. But they left me out there high and dry.
Well, one thing I hear quite often is that we have to keep our head down because we never know where retaliation is coming from, but I think that we are past that.
That's true.
It won't be the end, this will not be the last time we talk about it.
Councilman Green.
For those of you that will remain for our meeting, we had a citizen to give us two cases of cupcakes, and you all can feel free to have some after the council finishes.
Lauren Rae Anderson.
Lauren Anderson, 247 East Lister, 71101. I wanted to go last because I don't really know where my comments belong, or if they're even relevant to this meeting. But recently, I took an international trip, and I flew out of Shreveport International Airport, it's not an international airport yet, but Shreveport Regional Airport, and I had layovers in like three other international airports. And in comparison, the Shreveport Regional Airport is awesome. It is easy, accessible, fast, clean, and I think it's a great representation of Shreveport. There's a corridor with an art installation by two current and local artists that I wish people could see even if they're not flying. So, yeah, I don't know who to thank or praise over that. I hear y'all talk about the airport, but anyway. So that, the accessibility of the airport and the manageability of it, I think is a great representation of Shreveport, because I had a friend visit from Houston last summer, and we were just running around town, parking, Ubering, lifting, and she made the comment that it's just, Shreveport is so manageable. Like, you don't have to sit in traffic for 45 minutes in the hot sun to get anywhere. So whenever you're, this is probably an issue for the MPC, but whenever you're thinking about zoning, rezoning, things like that, like the area Mr. Arsenault was talking about, like he scoffs over the fact that it's residential when it should probably be part of the commercial wasteland that's there right now. Those areas are zoned residential for a reason. Not everybody drives, not everybody can drive, not everybody wants to drive. Some people walk, some people bike, and some people are in wheelchairs. I was just thinking of somebody I know, she has seizures, she can't drive. So those areas, they make it difficult for people who don't drive to have access to those goods and services. So that's just something I would like for y'all to consider. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Those are all the requests to speak, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Anderson, did she leave? I responded to her email earlier, I didn't know if she got it. Ms. Anderson, I sent your email earlier, I don't know if you got it.
I'm sorry, I forgot to thank you.
No, I just wanted to make sure you got it. Thank you, ma'am. All right, we have the following appointments to be considered today.
Mr. Chairman, the administration has requested that the Shreveport Airport Authority appointees be removed. It's a motion, second.
So moved?
Second.
Moved by the chair, seconded by Councilman Butcher to remove Shreveport Airport Authority executive appointments. If there's any discussion, stand down, please vote. Passes with six and one out of the chain. Right, we have Assistant to the Superintendent of Streets and Drainage, Mr. Edward Savannah.
I moved him up the phone two weeks.
Second.
It's been motioned by Councilman Flurry, and seconded by Councilman Nicholson to postpone.
Chairman, given the earlier announcement that Mr. Negretti was gonna be retiring at the end of the week, I'm wondering, would this cause any issue within the department? Can the administration address that? I'm sorry?
Yeah, we have had these conversations, just anticipating the fact that Mr. Negretti will be retiring. I'll let Gary fill in the details. Gary, you can come on up. But we will be looking at replacing this position, you know, and advertising it as soon as possible, and making sure that staff is prepared and equipped to be able to respond, because I know that you all do have a lot of requests that come from this division every day.
Yes, I mean, we have discussed this. To be quite honest, I need some help. You know, I'm down by myself as a chief building official, assistant director, director, and then now over Streets and Drainage. So I do need some help. I've got some, you know, high expectations of Mr. Savannah coming in, you know, to try to get some work done. He's had the experience, and right now I need some people with, you know, with experience as we start to look for a, for someone to fill Mr. Negretti's position. You know, we're losing a lot of experience with him, but like I say, you can only do so much with the personnel that I've got, and we need, you know, we need some more boots on the ground to try to get this done.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Norman, but I appreciate your cooperation. This is my statement, it's not just yours. It's been three weeks ago now since our last meeting. Mr. Savannah came before us, presented himself, his experiences, qualifications, what he would like to see in this department, and as well as what he feel he could contribute. And I thought we received that. It was mentioned earlier that we get a lot of feedback from social media. Social media doesn't affect me at all. I mean, I like to say my standard is that I support and I vote for what I can defend. I know the family. Like you, I received a letter from somebody unanimous about Mr. Savannah's coming back into the city department. I don't know who sent it or what it meant, so I guess I need to ask the question. Why the delay? Why did we want to postpone this?
I need the time to look into some things, like you, I have seen, and it doesn't affect me, but I'd like to have the time to pursue some things that I've been made aware of. And two weeks is not gonna make or break us. Why the rush?
Well, I mean, rush is not a rush, it's been three weeks since we had his name in submission.
I understand, but I did not get my information until just recently.
Okay, does this, does this, Mr. Norman just mentioned that he's down to himself in very limited...
Mr. Norman has a lot, Von White over there, Councilman Brappert. He has many supervisors over there. It's not like this department is sitting there hanging its hat on one person. We can go ahead and vote, it doesn't matter. If it doesn't work out, then it'll be hanging on your head.
No, 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 no. I'm holding, I'm sure that the administration, the mayor specifically vetted Mr. Savannah. He recommended Mr. Savannah. And if he didn't think Mr. Savannah was qualified, then he wouldn't have recommended Mr. Savannah. So the Mr. Savannah's performance in this position would be the responsibility of the mayor to deal with Mr. Savannah. I'm not gonna deal with Mr. Savannah. I deal with a lot of people in my day job that I, I won't be evaluating Mr. Savannah, but I will trust that the mayor would not have brought him forward if he didn't feel confident that Mr. Savannah could do the job. And I'm saying, with the depletion of the department, I just, I just don't know what two weeks would do in regards to bringing back something that you feel like is detriment to Mr. Savannah coming to work for the city. If that's the case, then I can, I can understand that. But if it's, if it's a rumor or something that we feel...
No, 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 Councilman, it's not a rumor. But I'll say this to you, as one suppressed said, I trust, but I'll, but verify. And that's all I'm trying to do. I trust the mayor, but I just want to verify, okay?
I understand, okay.
Counsel, a quick note on the record. Can we see the letter? I don't know who received the letter, I don't know the contents of the letter, I have no idea.
I don't even know where I got the letter from. I got the letter right here.
Did any other council members receive this?
Mr. Chairman, while the mayor reads the letter, I will say that I have received from multiple sources information that I too would like to follow up on before we vote on this gentleman's confirmation. This council has approved 95-plus percent of the mayor's nominees. I expect that to continue. But the reason we have a confirmation process and the reason that our rules require a two-week layover before confirmation is to give members of the public an opportunity to submit information to the council for our consideration. I think we need to, we need to take the information we've received seriously and make a decision after we've had an opportunity to do it.
Mr. Chairman.
I guess that this agenda was posted probably on Friday, and this was put back on here Friday that made the public notice this, because I too have received some phone calls about Mr. Savannah and his performance. All of it is rumors, and I would like to verify this. I think that due diligence is something that we need to do. I would like to verify it. I have graciously postponed, and seconded postponements over the last four or five months, and I think that we need to just take an extra two weeks. I don't want to cause any harm to Mr. Norman, which by the way, answers my emails within about four minutes and makes me look like a hero 90% of the time to most of my constituents because he takes care of business. But I do think, let's just let Councilman Flurry get the answers that he needs, and maybe we'll get the answers we need, and then we can move forward. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Oh, he's over there.
And my response to that would be simply that, at his confirmation, he mentioned that he was at least a 25- or 30-year employee of the city. And if you stay on a job 25 or 30 years, you're obviously doing something, something right. Now, again, if there's something out there that would call concern for this body, then I, and I'm guessing you feel strongly about it. then I, I, and I'm guessing you feel strongly about that, but at the same time... He was...
Brapp, can we speak into the microphone a little bit and say you was...
Well, I'm thinking as I speak, Mr. Chairman, because I don't want to, I don't, I, I don't, I, I really, I'm really, I have the reservations about trying, pulling Mr. Savannah through this, because it never happened before. But I'm just saying that, that, that when those type of recommendations come before the body, we usually trust, I mean, I mean, if he was being appointed to a department head, that he was going to be overseeing a great mass of people, and there were some, some issues within, in his past that would cause his judgment to be questioned regarding supervising. But he will not be a department head. He'll be assisting, uh, director. So I just, I just, I just, I just don't know how a long-term employee could, could be put through scrutiny at this stage, but, but, uh, I'm, I'm prepared to vote, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
All right, um, so on the, on the, on the table we have Councilman Flurry to postpone for two weeks, am I correct?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
All right, so, I think that's a real vote on, I believe. Is there any other discussion? I just saw it. Let me say this. I just saw it. I hadn't seen it, uh, didn't know anything about it. The, the constitute for delaying, I, I postponed it. I don't... I don't know, but it's, I mean, I think it's a serious, uh, I think it's a serious, uh... For some reason, I, I, I don't know if two weeks is going to hurt or going to, or going to, um, help. But I think that I need to, um... I think everyone should have saw it the first. Let me say that first, if I think all of them should. But I, I didn't. I don't know. It wasn't, it wasn't even addressed to me. But, um, I just had to say that much, and I, I wanted to go ahead and...
So, let me, let me ask you a question, Mr. Chairman. You just saw that, that document?
Yes, sir.
With no, with no signature. Nobody took claims to it. Are you going to give it serious consideration?
The, what, I, I mean, any...
I mean, an anomalous, you would give serious consideration to an anomalous allegation?
I would.
You would?
I, I have to look at our, I have to look at our aspects, e- either way it go.
If somebody didn't have the, 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 the dignity to put their name on a document, I would not, would give it consideration. If you, if you believe in what you're saying, then you should be able to sign it.
Right. Councilman Fuller?
For the most part, I don't disagree with what Councilman Brapp was saying about anonymity when you're making really big claims like that. But I'll also say that we've set a precedent over weeks and weeks and weeks of when someone asks for the courtesy to be extended of a postponement, we postpone it. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Councilman Fuller. All right, the end of the discussion. Mel Perkins, that's it. Call for the vote. Put to postpone, correct, for two weeks? Passes four, three. Next we have...
Five, those five, two.
I'm sorry.
Who's five, two?
Five, two.
I said I hit the wrong button, Mr. Chairman.
I read it wrong.
We can reconsider, but it'll still be the show for the record that it was four, three. Yeah, I was voting, uh, no.
Want to postpone?
You want to change your vote?
He can change it.
Is there any objection to Councilman Green changing his vote?
It'll still be the same.
Okay.
It'll still be the same?
Yeah, I just, I just hit the wrong button.
Okay. So we are... All right, now, we're going to Assistant Director of Recreations and Athletic and Spa, Mr. Dobbs. Mr. Persine Miro, uh, second. It's been moved by Councilman Flurry, second by the Chair, to approve. Motion passes with seven. Congratulations, Mr. Miro.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, the City Attorney has requested the council to suspend the rules to approve the appointment of Assistant City Attorney Courtney N. Ray. As suggested yesterday, three motions would be required if you want to do this. One, to add to, this name to the agenda. The second, to suspend the rules, and the third, to vote for confirmation.
The chairman moved to suspend the rules.
Uh, the first one would be to add to the agenda.
I'm sorry.
Add to the agenda. Add to the agenda.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Brapp, and the second by the Vice Chair.
Mr. Chairman, after you get the second, we need to have public comments.
Is there anyone, uh, here to speak for or against adding this to the agenda? I'm sorry.
She's the one to speak.
Miss ma'am. Ms. Glover?
John Glover, eighty-one hundred Pines Road, Apartment 3G, Street Court 71129. On yesterday, when I sat in the work session, there was the conversation of you all having to take a three-step, whatever, to be able to do what you're asking to be done today. My question is, why are we making these changes in the first place with regards to Ms. Strand, and then bringing aboard another person when you're saying that the new person that you're bringing aboard is supposed to take the prosecuting, if I'm not mistaken, of Mr. Miners? Is that what was said yesterday?
Ms. Glover.
This is about adding...
This is for, we're, we're adding a city attorney, but that's going to be for prosecution. That doesn't have anything to do with what's going on.
So it doesn't have anything to do with Mrs. Strand? Okay, then, okay, then, thank you, and, excuse me.
All right, anyone else would like to speak for or against adding this to the agenda? Saying no? Call for the vote. Add to the agenda, please vote.
Vote for the agenda.
According to adding to the agenda, and it requires a unanimous vote.
Motion carries with seven.
Next is a motion to suspend the rules.
So moved?
Second. It's been moved by Councilman Brapp, and the second by the Chair. Suspend the rules? Vote. Motion carries with seven. And now...
Move for confirmation, Mr. Chairman.
It's been moved by Councilman Brapp, and the second by the Chair. Confirmation. Please vote. Motion carries with seven. Congratulations, Ms. Ray, if she's out in the audience, I'm not sure.
She's not here.
Okay. All right.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right. There are no items on the consent agenda for introduction to be adopted. Mr. Thompson, please proceed with regular gen, agenda legislation.
Uh, Resolution fifty-seven authorizes the mayor to accept a monetary donation of seventy-five thousand dollars from Judah and Astrid Hertz, uh, to be utilized by the Streetport Public Assembly and Recreation Department for Project Swim.
So moved?
Second.
Moved by Chair, second by Councilman Fuller. Please vote. Motion carries with seven. Mr. Thompson?
Resolution fifty-eight accepts the dedication of the Streets and Servitudes for utilities and drainage as shown on the right-of-way dedication plan, the Grove, and otherwise providing with respect thereto.
So moved?
It's been moved by Councilman Butcher, and seconded by Councilman...
Second.
Brapp, I'm sorry. Please vote. Motion carries with seven. Mr. Thompson?
Uh, Resolution fifty-nine to recognize Mr. Raff D. Ballantyne. I think that's going to be postponed.
Move to postpone for two weeks.
A second postponement. Moved by Councilman Butcher, second by Councilman Brapp. Postpone. Postpone number fifty-nine. Motion carries with seven. Mr. Thompson?
Resolution number sixty is a resolution whereby the mayor is making a recommendation to the City Council for its approval regarding the amount and type of various insurance premiums, and to authorize the mayor to execute payments to the agent of record for the purpose of binding insurance. Uh, there is one amendment. The amendment removed, removes disputed facts, which are the subject of the internal auditor's investigation, and inserts the payment of amount, one-hundred-and-seventy-three-thousand-four-hundred-ninety-nine dollars and sixty-two cents that is being authorized.
So moved?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, the amendment is mine, and I would like to first move that the amendment be adopted before the legislation.
So we vote on the amendment first?
Yes, yes, I'm sorry.
Vote on the amendment first?
The motion and second are by...
Motion by Councilman...
That was by Nicholson and Fuller.
Second by Councilwoman Fuller. Motion carries with seven. Mr. Thompson?
As amended.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Brapp, and second by Councilwoman Fuller, as amended. Please vote. Motion carries with seven.
We're now into introduction of resolutions. Resolution sixty-one authorizes the Streetport Airport Authority to execute a permanent right-of-way eneasement with Southwestern Electric Power Company. Resolution sixty-two adopts the system survey and compliance questionnaire required by the Legislative Auditor's Office of the State of Louisiana. Resolution sixty-three authorizes the mayor to accept a monetary donation of twenty thousand dollars from the Brookshire Grocery Company to the city to be utilized by the Police Department and the Fire Department. Resolution sixty-seven selects the Times as the official journal of the city for the period commencing July first, twenty nineteen, through June the thirtieth, twenty twenty. Resolution sixty-five approves the budget for the Caddo's Streetport Sales and Use Tax Commission for the fiscal year beginning July first, twenty nineteen.
The motion to introduce this resolution?
So moved?
Second.
Moved by Councilman Brapp, and second by the Vice Chair.
Councilman Green, sir.
Councilman Green, I'm sorry. Moved by Councilman Green, second by Councilman Nicholson. There's no other discussion. Please vote.
Mr. Chairman, there's no vote necessary on the introduction. It says the change of, uh, recent change to the council's procedure.
Just thought about that. Yes, ma'am, you're correct.
We're now into introduction of ordinances. Ordinance fifty-eight rescinds ordinance thirty-three of twenty, two thousand and nine, fifty-four of twenty-eleven, and one-thirty-six of twenty-thirteen, and removes vehicular flow restrictions on Baker Street, Fannin Street, and North Street, and section thirty-nine, Township eighteen North, Range fourteen West. Uh, ordinance fifty-nine creates and establishes a no-through truck route on Mackey Lane between Jewella Avenue and Walker Road. Ordinance sixty creates stop intersections in the Lucian Field Estates, and otherwise provides with respect thereto. Ordinance sixty-one amends the twenty-nineteen Riverfront Development Fund budget. Ordinance sixty-two is a zoning matter, uh, case nineteen dash three-hundred dash C. A rezoning property located between Fourth Street and Crestwell Avenue, approximately four-hundred-and-twenty-five feet northwest of Marshall Street, from I M U Industrial Mixed Use District to I two Heavy Industrial District. Uh, so, ordinance sixty-three is a zoning matter, nineteen dash three oh three dash C. It rezones properly located on the northwest corner of Greenwood Road and Danny R. Wimbley Road, from C three General Commercial District to C four Heavy Commercial District. And ordinance number sixty-four is a zoning matter, case number nineteen dash three oh five dash C. It rezones properly located on the southwest corner of Linwood Avenue and West Sixty-third Street, from R one five Single Family Residential District to I one Light Industrial District.
Will Marshall introduce these orders?
So moved?
Second.
Are we allowed to ask for one to not be adopted, or not to be added? Not to be introduced?
You can ask to take them up separately, Councilwoman Fuller?
Um, okay. I would like to take them up separately.
All right. Question for the council lady.
Yes, sir?
Councilman Brapp.
The courtesy of introduction has been offered in the, the various, uh, proponents. So tell me why, when you want something introduced when it's not really up for vote?
Because maybe it shouldn't be introduced until it's complete.
Oh, I'm sorry. May, what, what...
Ordinance sixty-one.
Sixty-one?
I talked to the C A O last Friday about information for ordinance sixty-one, and I'm not seeing some of the things that I asked about with the fact sheet, and I'm wondering if it might be more appropriate for them to remove it and come back with it another couple of weeks with more, with complete information.
You don't think the interim would allow that to be provided to you?
No. I think that it'd be better to go ahead and get all the information together and have some discussion before it's introduced. And then take another few weeks to review it and get comment, and then vote on it with everything, with the entire fact sheet and packet.
So... So let me ask. I, I know at the last meeting you, you inquired about some information regarding this at that time. You, you're not, you're not satisfied with that?
So if we introduce it now, we're introducing it with the packet of information that's here, and that's what's available for the public to review for the next couple of weeks, whereas we could go back, get all the information, and have that completely open to the public for review before we have discussion.
So, administration, would this delay cause any concern for you?
Um, I, we did talk on last Friday, and we did start preparing information. Um, there are some pieces of it that we are still waiting to get from the consultant to complete it. Um, so that's why we didn't put it on the agenda. We didn't intend to have it posted before the next meeting. Um, but if, I, I can try to work to get the rest of that information this week, you know, if that's acceptable. Um, and then, uh, we can provide that information and send it to you directly so that you have it.
Well, I'm interested in having it, but I also want it to be available to the public so that they can review it and be informed of what decisions we're trying to make.
Sure. I mean, I don't know if there's a way to, you know, facilitate that. Is there?
I'm sorry, what is the question?
Is there, is there a way to facilitate that, like providing that information so that it can be available on, maybe on this agenda as an attachment, so that the public can be able to view it? Uh, but we can pull the rest of the information.
If we get, if we get exhibits, we can attach them to the, uh, if it's introduced.
Okay. Um, but yeah, if, if that's acceptable, we'll work to, you know, to push to get that information before the week is out.
Okay, that'll be helpful. Thank you.
Sure.
At the same time, I mean, can they just, I'm going to ask them, can they just go ahead and introduce it? And then...
If, if, that's fine, then if she can get it, that's fine.
Okay.
Of course, they could do the attachments, which would be the public information.
Councilman Butcher?
I, I kind of see where you're coming from on that. I, I, I think that we need to let the public see what you're, I don't even have an idea what you're asking for, but obviously it's important.
Well, this, do we need to... So, ordinance sixty-one is about the forty thousand dollars being requested for the transition team, and the information I asked for, just be more comprehensive of who's doing the work. Since it's been asked for after the fact, to see who's doing it, what was involved in order to defend, asking the city for those funds. Um, and so that's what I'm, that's what I'm asking for. I don't think that's unreasonable, but we can, if we can get that information and make it available to the public quickly, I, I'm fine with that, but that's what I'm bringing attention to. And this seems like the appropriate time to do that.
Councilman Butcher, would you, you, you like for us to elaborate on this once again, what we talked about last time?
No, no, I mean, I'm, I think what Councilwoman Fuller's asking for is sufficient for me. I mean, I, I understand where she's coming from to, to not add it uh, due to the fact that she wants to get that information out, because we do have calls coming in from constituents on... on it. It would be nice for this to be added to the agenda where people can see it and debate it, where we're not into the situation we were just in with Mr. Savannah postponing something that we've been sitting on for three weeks, because new information has come in at the end of the appointment period. So it'd be nice if we could, could get this on the agenda where people can look at it and give their feedback, prepare to speak, so I, I'm good, I mean.
Yeah, we'll get it added.
All right. Then if, if we can get that by the end of the week, then I'm fine with this, doing everything and introducing it comprehensively, and that one by one.
Okay. So move.
So we just need a motion and a second.
Moved by Councilman Green, and second by Councilman Bradford.
So, so it has been introduced. We're now in ordinances on second reading and final passage. Ordinance twenty-seven to repeal and replace Article seven purchases in chapter twenty-six finance. There are four amendments that have been submitted. I understand that at least one of them will be introduced, will be, you'll be asked to vote on.
Councilman Nicholson.
Mr. Chairman, this is my ordinance, and so I will recite what I think is about to happen after I give a brief summary of the ordinance. The, the ordinance is originally offered, simply would require our purchasing agent to?
Point of order, Mr. Chairman, shouldn't we get a second? Shouldn't we get it on the floor before we debate?
We certainly can't, Councilman.
That's a, no problem.
This should be moved for adoption of amendment number four.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Bradford, and second by Councilman Nicholson. Discussion, Councilman Nicholson.
As I was saying, Mr. Chairman, the original ordinance as offered would require our purchasing agent to update our purchasing rules and regulations. To my appreciation, that part of the ordinance is uncontroversial, and I intend to move for adoption of that part of the ordinance. The original ordinance also included a requirement that the city implement a competitive process for the selection of bond counsel and the other professionals who assist the city with the issuance of bonds. I made a commitment last month to separate that piece of the ordinance from the remainder, and amendment one, which is my amendment, would do that, and so I intend also to offer amendment one, which again would remove from this ordinance the requirement that the city employ a competitive process for the selection of bond counsel. I, I made that amendment not because I think we should not employ a competitive process, I do, but because the majority of the council is not, at this time, prepared to implement that procedure. Amendment two, which also is my amendment, if adopted, would require the city and the administration to obtain city council approval for all contracts and expenditures exceeding one hundred thousand dollars. I recognize that this would be a significant departure from the way that Shreveport has done business for decades. The, the mayor and his staff have expressed concern about the administrative burden that that requirement would impose. I, I am, I am not convinced myself that our staff would be unable to carry that burden. Many other cities have lower thresholds, and I'm confident that in time, appropriate procedures could be implemented to bring additional public scrutiny and sunshine to the city's expenditure of funds and execution of contracts, but both the mayor and a majority of the council do not agree with me. They think that would be too burdensome, and that it is not worth the administrative effort. During our last meeting, Councilman Flurry proposed an amendment which would have raised that threshold to five hundred thousand dollars. At five hundred thousand dollars, the contractor view threshold would require only the largest contracts and the city's largest expenditures to come before the council for approval. Many cities around the country have this requirement, and again, if, if majority of the council is not in favor of a one hundred thousand dollar threshold, I would support a five hundred thousand dollar threshold, not because of, as has been suggested, who the mayor is or what he has done, but because when I ran for office, I promised good government and transparency and integrity, and I believe this procedure, regardless of who is in the mayor's seat and who is on the council, would move Shreveport in that direction. It is apparent to me from my recent discussions with my colleagues that a majority of the council is not prepared at this time to support that amendment. I hope that further conversations with the mayor's office and with my colleagues will allow us to agree on some threshold, some amount beyond which council approval will be required. I think that's in the best interest of the city. I think it will help the city not only for the next four years, but for decades and generations to come, to spend its money more responsibly, and I will continue to advocate for that rule to my colleagues and to the mayor, but we're not there yet. And so for that reason, I will withdraw and not offer amendment two to this legislation. Amendment three, as I said, was offered by Councilman Flurry. He's advised me that he intends to withdraw that. Amendment four was offered by Councilman Bradford. He intends to withdraw that as well, and so my, my hope is that we will adopt amendment one, which will remove the bond counsel and bond professional competitive selection process from this ordinance. We will pass the ordinance requiring our purchasing agent to work on our purchasing rules and regulations, and that after further caucusing, we can reach agreement on some of the other changes that have been proposed in this legislation. Thank you.
A question, Mr. Chairman. Was the motion on number four, amendment number four?
The motion was made to start the debate, and I'm prepared to withdraw my amendment. I think the council chair has very well expressed the sentiments of the council, and at the proper time, Mr. Clerk, I'm going to withdraw my amendment to support amendment one.
Not amendment. Councilman Bradford, you will withdraw amendment four, which is your amendment?
Yeah.
Yes, sir. And, and Councilman Flurry, you will withdraw amendment three?
Yes.
And, and I, I will withdraw Mr. Thompson amendment two, and with those amendments withdrawn, I will move for the adoption of amendment one.
My confusion was?
Because everybody's confused now, so which is one?
Amendment one, Mr. Chairman, as I, as I attempted to express, is?
I moved it to start the debate, and we had to start with four.
They give you to withdraw that motion.
Yes. Clerk, just proper, proper protocol. Since I made the motion to start the debate, I'm gonna withdraw my motion. I'm withdrawing my motion to adopt amendment four, and I'm going to remove amendment four from the ordinance.
And, Mr. Chairman, I also remove, ask that amendment three be removed.
And, and Mr. Chairman, uh, Mr. Chairman and Mr. Thompson, I said I request amendment two be removed, so that only amendment one remains.
And is there a motion to adopt amendment number one?
The, the chairman has requested that I restate the purpose of amendment one. Amendment one will remove from this legislation the requirement of a competitive selection process for bond counsel and other bond professionals. That, that is a, a piece of the legislation that a majority of the council does not support at this time, and so I am, I am moving to adopt amendment one to remove that portion of the legislation. And what remains with the amendments withdrawn and with amendment one passed will be an ordinance that requires our purchasing agent to revise our purchasing rules and regulations, which as I've said, I, I believe is not controversial, and I think we should pass and move on down the road.
Is there a second to amendment number one?
Second.
All right. I still got Councilman Green.
I'm yielding, before the second, I'm yielding to the ma, I thought I saw the mayor's.
I was just gonna say my comments to the end, Councilman. If it's, if there's any other comments, I just wanna go at the end, if that's okay with the council. Okay, Councilman Butcher? I mean, no, Councilman Green, I'm sorry.
So my understanding is we, this particular amendment is just to do the, the housekeeping?
Well, the, the amendment removes the competitive selection process for bond counsel. That, that is not housekeeping. Amendment one takes that out, because that was something that there was some disagreement on the council about. The remaining ordinance will require our purchasing agent to revise our purchasing rules and regulations, which is something that the city attorney's office has advised me needs to happen. You know, this ordinance started as something very small and non-controversial, and I managed to grow it over the past two months.
So once we vote on this, this is just to do what you just said?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
But we'll need, we'll need to adopt amendment one, and then we'll be back to the, the start of this legislation.
Councilman Butcher?
I wanna just make a couple of comments real quick about, about the administration, and, and whenever I made a plea to them the other day, if, if anything was over five hundred thousand dollars until we got to this point, Ms. Jones sent us an email on a five hundred thousand dollar check that was issued, and I appreciate that. I also wanna thank Mr. Hanson for having us up to his domain and showing us through the, the work that he's doing as far as where we can go in and look at what checks have been issued. One thing that was really kinda interesting to me, and kind of speaks to why this ordinance as far as maybe a little bit of oversight to the five hundred thousand, I, I do agree with Councilman Nicholson, however, I don't think that there is enough votes for that right now, so, you know, I understand why, why he's removing that, that amendment. But one thing that stood out to me as we're looking through these checks, we were like, so Keith, show us how we can tell how many five hundred thousand dollar checks and above we've written. And so he showed it to us, and it generated this neat spreadsheet. I get to looking down the spreadsheet, and there was a twenty-four million dollar check issued the week before to a deceased person that had just died, and I'm like, whoa, wait a second, what's the deal with this? And Keith's like, I said, he's dead, why aren't we paying him twenty-four million dollars? And Keith's like, if you look, here's where it was voided, and it was, but that's a perfect example, why I bring that up, of oversight, and why this is important. It's not anything against Mayor Perkins. Like I said, they, they, they gracious enough to, you know, go after what I requested, and they, they've been gracious about that. I think that this is not too late for us to start working on some things, but I do think that the five hundred thousand dollar limit was what I was gonna support today and fully intended to vote for today, and it is. I told, I told somebody that called me the other day, they said, well, is it just because it's the mayor? Is it 'cause he's black? Are you trying to hold a black man down? And I'm like, absolutely not. If Dumbo were the mayor, I'd be voting for this. I mean, seriously, that's what we were elected to do. We have New Orleans, New Orleans does this, which we seem to be trying to look into doing a lot of what they're doing, which is great, I think they're a good city. There are several other cities that do, that have a minimum on there, so I don't want there ever to be any misconception in social media or anybody sitting out here that this is anything other than business to me. It's nothing against the mayor, it's nothing against anything the mayor's done. We all make missteps. I've had, I've been in business twenty-some-odd years in Shreveport, and trust me, I have made many, many, many mistakes, and we're all gonna make mistakes, and you know what we do? We lift each other up, we pat each other on the back, we dust each other off and say, hey, man, I got your back, but this is how we're trying to help. And we may disagree, and we may not get along on everything, but I will say this, that the comments that have been said about my colleague, Mr. Nicholson, by several people on social media have been completely, completely inaccurate, and this is business, guys. You know, you elected us to come up here and do what we felt was right, and I'm only here three and a half more years. Councilman Nicholson's only here three and a half more years. Mayor Perkins is only here, we only have that three and a half years guaranteed to us, and I would rather go down doing what I feel is right than not speak my mind and keep doing what we've been doing over and over again. But I will say this, on the record, as I'm sitting here, I am hopeful, and I've said this over and over again, I am hopeful for this administration, I am hopeful for this council, I am hopeful for the city of Shreveport. You come up here and you talk to us anytime you want to, I don't care what you have to say, I'm gonna sit here and listen. I got out for the first time since I've been on this council and walked out while somebody was speaking, because my daughter called me twice, and whenever she calls me twice in the city of Shreveport where we're having people shot left and right, the first thing I do is answer my twenty-one-year-old daughter's phone call. That's the first time I've ever left this council chamber while somebody's talking. My phone number is published, my emails are always answered, and I'm gonna tell you what, the heart of this council, Councilman Bradford, Green, myself, Bowman, Nicholson, Fuller, Flurry, we all are working non-stop, along with the mayor and his administration, to make sure that Shreveport is a better place, and we love your input, but for people to go on and say that we're being racist and trying to hold people back, that's not, that's not a fact. It's, it's just not. So, I just wanna say that I support Mr. Nicholson's five hundred thousand dollars. I was prepared to vote for it today. Things didn't work out that way, but I hope that this will open a line of communications with the mayor's office. I appreciate what Mr. Hanson's done, where I can go in and look at it, and I'm gonna be, you can be darn well sure that if I see something on there, I'm gonna be calling the mayor and I'm gonna be out here telling y'all about it. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Sorry to get passionate, but it's, it's a passionate deal we're doing here. I love Shreveport, and I think we all do, or you wouldn't be sitting through a four-hour meeting. Thank you.
We're not at four hours yet.
We're getting there.
I thought it was me. I yield to the mayor. Well, go ahead. Sorry. Please. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair. First of all, unlike Councilman Butcher, I'm old, so I have to go out sometime, and I, I don't mean to go out on purpose, but I have to go out. But Councilman Nicholson, I'd just like to say thank you for what you've done today. I prayed about it, and I thank you for it, and I talked to Councilman Butcher about it before council meeting. He asked me to come out, and I really, I'm really thankful for where we are today for doing this, and I, I'd just like to just say thank you. But on, you were asking the Chamber of Commerce about some things, and of course, we brought up about fair share, and what happens is he couldn't answer it because he didn't know. But fair share, what's that about, is that anyone other than a white male can tap into fair share. At one time, it was just for, we, we could say minorities, at one time, we were black, we were called minorities, and now we're called black, we're back to black, but anyway, that's what that happens. So anybody who has a business, if a white male has a business, he can give his wife fifty-two percent or fifty-one percent of his company, it becomes a minority company. So therefore, they have the right to take up fair share, whereas what it was meant to be is no longer what it is, and he could not answer that because he possibly didn't, didn't get exactly what you were saying.
Chair, may I speak to that? At the risk of speaking for Mr. Jamison, he didn't wanna speak to it on the record right now, because he represents a five oh one C three dealing with that directly, and didn't wanna get involved in anything that could be perceived as political.
Of course, that's just facts.
I'm just letting you know, 'cause he, he knew.
Okay. Well, I apologize, I didn't, I, I, I'm sorry, I missed state.
I'm just, I wanted that on the record.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, thank you, and I would like to also express my appreciation to this body. I said before that if this council was in place twenty years ago, we would be far, far along in this city. The compromise that we reached here today is, is an example of this council not wanting to polarize this council or even create any further division of race in this city. The, the hearts of these gentlemen and this lady is, is, is pure. The hearts of these gentlemen and this lady is pure. I trust, I trust them. We, again, I use this cliche, and I have to keep using it, that we see things not as sometimes things are, but we see things as we are. But we see things clearer together now. But, and whatever, whatever, whatever was levied towards you, Councilman Nicholson, on social media, I regret that, that we don't need that. But in response to that, in response to the mayor, and some of the legislation that we've offered over the last two or three months, perception, perception is that there is an attempt to reduce his power, authority as the mayor, that's perception. I know we talk, and that's the good thing about this body, we can communicate. That hadn't always been the case, Councilman Bowman. We can communicate, there's not a personal in this council that we can't talk and get an understanding, a clear understanding. But perception has been, especially coming from African-American community, that this mayor is trying to do something that hadn't been done before, and that is to be inclusive economically. And he's getting, he's getting, he's getting challenged. And he don't think, he don't think it's the case, but it's a perception. And sometimes, perception, if not addressed like we did today, become reality in certain person's mind. And I think, I think we're gonna work this through. The city is dependent on us to work this through. So, we're gonna move forward, I think, with the best interest of the city at heart. When we disagree, we just, we just work through it. I told you before, me and my wife don't just, don't grill everything, but we work through it. So, thank you, Councilman. And let's roll the polish leaves and work for the next three, three years and six months and make it happen. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Me and my wife always agree.
Oh, really?
'Cause she's always right.
I know, I'm a Chinese, and I didn't know it was Councilman Green, I need to go through it.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, earlier, Councilman Nicholson made some comments regarding the city attorney's office advising on the purchasing policies and procedures, and the need for it to be revised. And that, in working with you, Councilman Nicholson, in drafting this ordinance, that was some of the discussions that we had. But however, the city attorney has brought to my attention that she may want to speak on the legality of the actual ordinance that you're introducing.
Well, Ms. Creel, you're present, my suggestion is if you have concern about the legality, you give us counsel privately.
That was my intention.
That would be my preference, yeah.
And that is my intention. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, and also, Councilman Nicholson, I just wanna say this to you, that, and this is from my heart, that anybody that say that you are racist gotta be wrong, because some time ago, we passed some legislation that was pertaining to predominantly black folk getting a raise. And even though you were gonna get some heat from your constituents, you stood tall on this council, and you voted for it anyway. And you knew who the money was going to, you knew what was gonna happen, but you stood tall, and I really appreciate that, and I just thank, I just thank the Lord for it, because you stood like you supposed to stand. Our reserve was low, now we will have money in the reserve. And the people that pick up our trash and do the dirty job of the dirtiest, they got a raise because of you, and they will not yield color, 99.9% of them. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I really appreciate it very much, Councilman Green. Yes.
Yeah, just in conclusion, you know, thanks to the council for working with the administration. We really appreciate the vote of confidence from the majority of the council today. And also, I agree with the expressed motivations of Councilman Nicholson. We voted, you know, that was something that we proposed, and Councilman Nicholson voted to support passing that legislation to get our reserves back up to a healthy place. We've had many conversations, I know he wants good government, and we agree on that. I think what we defer just a bit is on the road to get there. And the road to get there is proposals of oversight of the administration, and looking back on some potential negligence of past administrations, and I understand that, again, I was frustrated with it as well, by the lengths we had to go to today. But I would say, there are other means and tools for us to get to that end, and my administration is pursuing and using those tools every single day. I would challenge any other previous administration on the transparency, on transparency from a budgeting standpoint in anything. I mean, even our policy recommendations, you name it. And that's a way that we can give citizens the view into our administration to see exactly what our actions are doing. So I think that that's where we defer, and I've gotten various calls from probably a half a dozen attorneys this week about the legality of this, and telling me, again, constituents that's just concerned, telling me to make sure I stand and protect the integrity of this office. So, that's where I am, and that's the reason why we're on two sides of this oftentimes. And I just look forward to working, continuing to work with the council, and doing the right thing, and looking forward in doing the right thing, and not, again, holding my administration to actions of past administrations. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, previous question.
I think we discussed that too.
I'm gonna bring my church mic.
My mic is out. Sorry. I think we discussed that a couple of weeks before, well, a couple of months before, that, you know, to be up here, you have to have tough skin. And sometimes, things are said and done that we don't, probably don't agree with or don't like. Some things were said on social media, but I think Ms. Fuller got some of that. I've got it in the past, Councilman Bradford has got it. I mean, I think we've all been racist somehow, some way, and that's just the town we live in. Yes, Mr. Hill, it's true, it is true. It is true. Every last one of us has had it, and I can attest to that, 'cause I see it. So, I just want to say that and make that statement out to everyone, that's just, we have to have tough skin, that happens. I've been called some things that I, some of it I might be, but most of them not. But I just want to put that on the record and say that, so I appreciate everyone up here.
Mr. Chair, what is, I'm old, what is social media, and how can I get on it?
If you don't know, you can't go.
Councilman Green, if you don't know, you can't go.
Best you ain't older, I guess. Councilman Bradford?
Chairman, I call for the previous question to vote.
This is on the amendment.
Yeah, amendment one. Please vote.
Motion carries with seven.
Motion on the ordinance as amendment. Second.
Motion carries with seven. Go back, I'm sorry, go back.
Can't we just not be controversial one time?
It's seven, I just, you know how I am, I have to be controversial, I stand alone.
So, you're changing your vote to seven?
We got it, yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, we're now under ordinance 44, amends the general, 2019 general fund budget concerning, concerns of school crossing guards.
Mr. Chairman, can we postpone that? I mean, I really would like for you and the appropriate parties to get together with the school board. I think there's opportunity.
I agree, is the school board willing to?
They are.
I mean, 'cause I don't wanna say that again, 'cause last time I got some phone calls, and they said that they didn't agree the last time.
No, Mr. Chairman, everything is compromised, everything is compromised, I promise you that. I got the same phone call.
Yeah, right, right.
But you saw, you saw the text, I got it, did you not?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, okay. And the text was in a negative? Yes.
Yes, sir.
The extreme negative, Councilman Butcher.
Yes, the extreme negative.
And I need to go on the record and say that I did, I am not advocating for taking away crossing guards, we need the crossing guards for our kids, I agree with that. I'm speaking on the payments, that's what I'm talking about. And if I asked 95% of Shreveport, who pays for crossing guards, I guarantee you, they would've said, "The school board." And it's not, it's the city of Shreveport.
So moved, postponed.
But I second, I second on postponing, but this is something that we have to, we have to bring to the discussion and get it done.
Mr. Chairman, I think that the discussion with the school board should be with the administration and not any school board members. I think we learned that from, from our last deal. I would, I would task Ms. Jones with maybe getting with Superintendent Gorey, and let's have a meeting with him, you and the mayor, and Chairman Bowman, since it's his legislation, and maybe the police chief, and let's...
Security for the school.
Yeah, and make sure that we're all on the same page. But, you know, it was my mistake, I mean, I'll take responsibility, I was, I had been speaking to one particular school board member, asked for Gorey's number, the school board member told me one thing, and I shared that with the chairman, and it was, and Councilman Nicholson, and Councilman Flurry, who's on the public safety committee, and we were under the impression the school board did not wanna come to the public safety committee. I think we all were under that impression, and after numerous phone calls from numerous school board members, I realized that was not the case. So, just for the record, we were told that, but really, we probably should've followed, I should've followed different channels. So... But at the same time, Councilman Butcher, I don't think the public safety committee was the proper venue to discuss.
And at that point, I asked just to have a separate meeting.
Right.
Just a regular, a regular meeting with them, and I was told that they were gonna, that Superintendent Gorey was gonna come here to that meeting, to the council meeting, to speak to us on and off the record, and that didn't happen. So, I had to, I'm going on the record to say that.
I mean, that was from him?
That was, from the school board member.
No, not from Gorey himself.
Not from Gorey himself.
This started in the public safety committee by request of the mayor.
Right.
You know, when this all was brought up, it started in the public safety committee. So, that's why, that's where it was, and then it moved on into the whole council. So, anyway, I just, I just wanted to go on record saying that I think that it probably was handled improperly on both ends, and I want the administration to take the council out of this, this is their deal, let us, y'all set up the meetings with them, and then report back to us, and tell us what you've come up with, and then we vote on it. And...
I mean, I wanna come to a resolution, I graduated with Superintendent Gorey, and I wanna work with him.
I think, I think we need to have a conversation to the, to the detail, to where we understand each other. I think yesterday, in our, in our work session, the chief gave us some options, and I think we took option three.
Right.
And he's gonna, he's gonna look into that, but I think at the same time, the administration, school administration, sit down with the chief, he given all options, and I think by, I mean, we got, we got, what, two and a half months before schools are back up?
Right.
And I think we'd be prepared to move from that point.
Okay.
That's my, that's my, that's my intent.
Okay. All right, it was moved by Councilman Bradford, second by?
No, Councilman Green.
Y'all's paper today. Second by Councilwoman Fuller?
Most people get me mixed up with Cedric Close.
Yeah, I'm on the safe side.
Think we twine.
Please vote.
We all are kin to the Bradford.
Motion carries with seven, postpone. To the next meeting, am I correct?
Yes.
It'll be back on.
Okay.
Ordinance 50, amends the capital improvements budget, this concerns our allocated funds for SPAR, a SPAR capital project from proceeds from the 2018 storm damage and cocoa marketing funds. So moved.
Second. Moved by Councilman Green, second by the chair. There's no discussion, please vote. Motion carries with seven, Mr. Thompson.
Ordinance 51, amends the 2019 general fund budget, this budget funds that, from the Judith and Astrid Hertz donation that you approved earlier. So moved, second.
Moved by Councilman Green, second by Councilman Butcher. There's no discussion, please vote. Motion carries with seven.
Ordinance 52, amends the 2019 general fund budget concerning SPAR's operating budget. So moved.
Second.
Moved by the chair, second by Councilwoman Fuller. There's no discussion, please vote. Motion carries with seven, Mr. Thompson.
Ordinance 53, amends and reenacts certain sections of chapter 94 of the code relative to utilities. And this is concerns of water and sewer department, a new building system. So moved, second.
Moved by Councilman Green, second by the chair. Any discussion? Please vote. Motion carries with seven.
Ordinance 54, this is a zoning matter, case number C-24-19. If adopted, it rezones property located on the southwest corner of East 70th Street and East Burt Coons Industrial Loop, from R17 Single Family Residential District to C3 General Commercial District. This is the request made by, concerns are requests made by Mr. Arsenault to remand to the MPC.
Councilman Bradford, you wanted to speak with Mr. Clark?
Yeah, I wanted, I wanted to, we're remanding it back to MPC, would that solve the concerns of Mr. Arsenault and his client?
I believe they're wanting to, the original was C3, and they're wanting to go down to C2.
But the original was not approved by the MPC.
By the MPC, yeah.
I'll give you some real quick background, Mr. Bradford. The staff of the MPC recommended approval of this application, and the board voted to deny the application, and, because there were some concerns about the, the ability of traffic to come off of Burt Coons and East Kings Highway. But we think that one of the reasons that the board was concerned was some C3 uses that were being contemplated in the application. So if this is remanded back, we believe maybe the board would be more inclined to recommend approval to you. That shows government truly working at its best. Yes.
Mr. Clark, if Mr. Bradford didn't have anything else, I have a quick question.
Yes, sir.
Is, how did this piece of property become, was this something during UDC that it reverted to R1, or was it always been R1?
It's always been sitting there to our knowledge, and we don't know why this small piece of property has just remained zoned, I think it was R1D prior to UDC, and so it just transferred over to R17.
And there's a driveway that goes into the sleep clinic, correct?
That's correct.
That abuts this piece of property?
That is correct.
So, any usage, do they have, will they have usage of that driveway?
That was one of the points of contention, because the person that owns the sleep clinic was in opposition.
Okay.
So, did not appear.
One other thing, while I've got you up here, and this is kinda off the subject, but I would like to know, any properties, and this is something I would hope your staff could come up with.
Yes, sir.
Any properties that were downzoned due to UDC? Do y'all have a list of those properties?
We will, we will look and see if we have such, such a record of those properties.
I would just be curious as to what may have been commercial at one point that was downzoned to residential, or maybe that was industrial and went down, 'cause I think we're dealing with another zoning issue as well. So, I just would like to know, I mean, I know it's not something you can do overnight by any means, but if you could, if you could provide the council with that, or council staff, that'd be great.
We will do everything humanly possible to get it to your next meeting. But I would like to share with you that the main focus of the downzonings were to take as much heavy industrial property off the road.
Right.
As possible, and that was the basis, and the basic downzonings were industrial down to commercial.
Well, maybe we just need to see to start with the commercial that went down to Well, maybe we just need to see to start with the commercial that went down to residential.
And if we have such a case, we will make sure we get it to you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Clark.
Yes, sir.
I make a motion to send this back to the MPC.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Butcher, seconded by Councilman Green. There's no other discussion, please vote. Motion carries with seven, Thompson.
Ordinance fifty-five, this is a zoning matter, case number C dash twenty-five dash nineteen. It rezones property located at nineteen twenty-five Crosslake Boulevard from C one neighborhood commercial district to R one seven, single-family residential district.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by the chair, seconded by Councilman Butcher. There's no discussion, please vote. Motion carries with seven.
Ordinance fifty-six, concerns on case number C dash twenty-seven dash nineteen. It rezones property located on the west side of Lenwood Avenue between Bolinger Street and Wilkinson Street from I two, heavy industrial district to C three, general commercial district, and C three, general commercial district to C four, heavy commercial district.
So moved.
Moved by Councilwoman Fuller, seconded by Councilman Bradford.
She talked too soft, I didn't hear.
I'll get louder then.
Oh, you're pressing a beat time.
I hadn't said nothing, yeah, I got wages going on how long it takes before I actually say something. I'm good right now.
Motion carries with seven.
I'm sure I'll make comments.
Ordinance fifty-seven is a zoning case, C dash thirty dash nineteen. It rezones property located on the southeast corner of West Burt Coons Industrial Loop in Westport from C three, general commercial district to I one, light industrial district.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by the chair, seconded by Councilman Bradford. There's no discussion, please vote. Butcher.
I thought I'd been saying I voted.
There you go.
You gotta go dog.
Motion carries with seven.
Those are all of the items on the regular agenda, there's one item on the table agenda, I'm not aware that anyone proposes to remove it from the table agenda.
I'm here. Which, right next time, we have no property standard, are ABO appeals to be considered? Are there any other appeals, Mr. Thompson?
We have none, Mr. Chairman.
Are there any reports from offices, boards, or committees? Mr. Thompson, is there a Clark's report?
Because Memorial Day holiday being on Monday, May the twenty-seventh, twenty nineteen, our next administrative conference meeting, that is, the Monday meeting, will be held on Friday, May the twenty-fourth. And the regular meeting will be on the regular date, Tuesday, May the twenty-eighth, twenty nineteen. We also had appointment letters from the mayor. There were three people on the historical reservation commission who were appointed Jasmine Jernigan, Dr. Frederick Washington, and Dr. Cheryl White for three-year terms.
Okay. All right. Any further communications from the administration, Ms. Jones?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Have any councilmen had any additional communications? Councilman Butcher?
I yield to council. Councilwoman Fuller?
I made it through the entire meeting without saying that I was ready to go to dinner.
Okay, then I have a question then. Thanks, I'll keep it brief, but the Red River District.
Oh, actually, shoot, I guess I was starting to get hungry. I, we do need to know about how things are going as far as rents in the Red River District, if everyone is up to speed as far as the different vendors that are in the Red River District right now.
And Shelley, she is here, I will let her give you some updates, because she works very closely with the property manager.
Good evening. We are, we have been fully occupied for the last two years. We are, though, in the process of evicting one tenant at this point due to non-payment. And then all of our other leases are up to date, we've had one tenant who is out due to some damage in her building, but she is back in there and operating, so everything is fully leased, with the exception, like I said, we have one space that we are currently evicting a tenant from.
Thank you for that, hopefully we can find a good tenant to replace them then, if that's going to be.
I hope so too, because it's been really nice to have it fully occupied. If you haven't been down there, there's something that goes on the first Friday of every weekend, we have events and activities. Go to our website, there's always something going on, the tenants have their own little merchant association that we developed, and they run themselves, and we help to support them. If you haven't been down, it's a beautiful space that's been, you know, very well maintained since the city took it over. There could be other options for it, I think we've talked about it, as we were talking about, you know, how do we divest ourselves of properties and expenses for the city, but right now, it is under...
Right now, we're probably the best stewards for it, and it's been, it has been clean, and there's been very good programming down there. It's been multi-age, multi-generational programming down there, some adult-only programming at night for different things. We've had some things with the Independence Bowl, there's been music down there, live music events. I'm excited about it, I think that I would love to see a partnership with, maybe with track, to see if we can get more art installed down there, and good lighting. And other than that, I think that if we're able to just keep it full and keep it clean, then we're doing something kind of right.
In keeping it, it looked abandoned before the city took over, and people who were coming to our downtown to visit the riverfront and casinos, it was an oyster. And that's probably the number one thing we were able to do, is clean it up, and it's in good condition, but as Councilwoman said, we do a lot of events, we participate in, you know, shop local during the holidays, and we do all kinds of events and activities, so we're trying to keep it programmed and trying to keep the space full.
Mr. Raigle, where are we in that eviction process?
They filed with the court yesterday.
So they're thirty-day, or they're five-day, what it's five days, isn't it, Judge? Yep, five days, and then they have a former JP coming out. So, as far as, is there any equipment or anything like that that's owned by the city in there that might be in jeopardy of being taken out?
Yes, sir, we do have equipment in there, we have full inventory pictures, everything that you can do to protect the city, we're trying to do that.
Because I know back a couple of years ago, something like that happened in another city-owned property, so I want to make sure if we've got tremendous amount of equipment in there, and not to say that they would, but I've done, I did over three hundred evictions, it's justice of the peace, and all kinds of crazy stuff happens, so, anyway, thank you, Mr. Raigle, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, Councilman Flurry?
Councilman Green, did you have something else you wanted?
Let's go eat.
All right, councilmembers, I just wanted to remind you that on the twenty-third, at Bill Cochran, I think I invited you, I just wanted to remind you that...
Twenty-third?
Twenty-third.
If we all show up, we're gonna put out a thing that we're all there.
Lunch on? Eleven?
Twenty-third, when is it?
Oh, it's there.
It's on social media, Mr. Green.
Hey, I got a six-year-old teacher I can on social media, I don't know.
Yeah, with every recognizing of my home awards, I think that there's, may not be big somebody, but I think it's... We don't have an executive session today, and if there's nothing else, then this meeting is adjourned.